We acknowledge the land upon which we gather is traditional Anseated Territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called order, and I just have an announcement for October 11th. Today, we raise the flag for the International Day of the Girl, an initiative of We Build a Dream. We Build a Dream is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to advancing diversity and inclusion initiatives to ensure equitable opportunities for everyone to succeed. In short, we believe in the power of diversity and the edge of advancement it provides. Since its inception in 2014 in Windsor, Ontario, Build a Dream has delivered programs to inspire young women, providing confidence, filling workforce skill gaps, and offering a new perspective for workforce problem solving. International Day of the Girl focuses attention on the need to address the challenges girls face and to promote girls empowerment and the fulfillment of their human rights. Working collaboratively, we can continue to close the workforce gender gap and lead diversity and inclusion initiatives across Canada. Okay, any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, see and none. We have the agenda. Approval of the agenda.
You're gonna invite the gentleman?
Could I? Yes. Could we, Donna, could you just invite them?
May I?
Do they know they're... Do you want to have the two chiefs come in?
Yes.
We're just gonna have an update from the chiefs.
Yep.
Is... For the agenda? Yep.
Chiefs?
Yep. Just one second.
Yeah, they're on their way in.
Okay, so Donna, our C A O, has invited both Chief of Fire Services Tim Mamie and Chief of Police Brad McConnell to give us an update on Hurricane Fiona. And I can tell you that attending these meetings, the E M O city team meetings, both of these fine officers conducted themselves not only professionally at the committee level, but how they presented themselves to the media. So if you want to start, Chief and Chief, did you want to say a couple of words, Counsel Revert, as Chair of Standing Committee for Police?
Your worship, thank you. I just, they did provide speaking notes and briefing notes to myself. Now, I guess I don't have to do it. If you, if you both gentlemen want to kind of brief counsel on what you had given me, then please feel free to do that.
You, if you wish, we can start with that.
It's up to these gentlemen.
Yep.
Your worship, I think the idea was that the co-chairs of the E O C would give an overview of everything, and then the departmental chairs could speak to their own areas as well.
Correct. Okay. Chief and Chief?
Thank you, your worship. You know, I stand here with the fire chief today and very proud of the team, the E O, the emergency management team that we were part of the past couple of weeks. On the 26th of September, I stood before you and asked you for your patience, your support, as we navigated our way through this very difficult time. We also asked our citizens for that same patience and support, and I'm here to thank everyone for providing that. It has been a very difficult number of weeks. We are Fiona plus 18 today, and I can tell you it was extraordinary level of damage and hardship on our citizens, but it was overshadowed by the extraordinary acts of kindness and support and teamwork from our staff. We're very proud of that. It's certainly, it's times like this that you depend on a solid team to rise to the occasion. I can tell you our city staff did that. Behind the scenes, you know, despite the first responders, the people that were taking the calls, the people that were working in the reception centers, were really extraordinary. Our management team on the ground, I had made a comment amongst the team the other day that in my, in my job, I've worked with a number of teams under very high-pressure situations, and it was a privilege and an honor and something special to be part of that team. Every day, there was a focused team, a team that was balanced, a team that was very measured in their approach, and we should all be proud of that. We know that there's still work to do, and there's lessons to learn from this, this type of incident. And I can assure you that we will reflect on those and work with our partners to make sure that we become more resilient as a city and help our citizens become more resilient. The services that, that were sustained through the, the event was remarkable. You had a whole set of city services that were not only trying to recover from this event, but to also offer their everyday services, which is extraordinary. But we know it wasn't perfect, and there's lessons to learn. But I can tell you that being part of that group from the, from the, from the very start, there wasn't a day we left there where our thoughts weren't with the people that we were still trying to help. And we agonized over that, as we knew there were still people without power, without utilities, and that still needed our, our services. And every day was a problem-solving exercise where we focused on helping our citizens, where, you know, we witnessed our city departments unite into singular focus of service in all the efforts to, to serve the citizens that live here, visit here, and work here. And we will continue on that, that path. Our E M O team is still active. We met this morning. We will continue to meet each morning to continue to problem-solve until we're through this event. And then we will gather as a team with our partners provincially and federally to see what we, what we can do better and how we can become more prepared. And again, I want to just refocus on my opening comments. You know, this, leading a team through this event, I had the privilege of standing beside my fire chief and who was, I'm gonna give him the mic here because he, he was instrumental in many ways, especially getting our schools reopened and assisting, insisting that, that our streets and our pathways and everything were safe for, for our children and the people that were taking our children to school to travel. And, and deserves a lot of credit, and so does our whole team, including our C A O and our, and our Director Sue Fraser, who provided guidance and counsel throughout the whole event and had been there every step of the way. And I know many of you may probably still have questions or concerns about what we're seeing and, and the effects that are in our city, and we'll do our best to try to address those. And I just would also just again like to recognize the fire chief.
Thanks, Chief. As Brad mentioned, and I think he hit all of the very high points here that which we were looking to do and just share with, with your worship and counsel. Just, it was a truly collaborative effort, as Brad mentioned. We don't get a lot of opportunity. Everybody thinks emergency services are always working side by side, but we each have different priorities at some issues. But with management level sitting together with their other managers in the, in the, in the city together and working as, as one collaborative unit was just exceptional. And that opportunity, as Brad mentioned, was something we don't get all the time. Thank you to, to everybody in here for, for letting us do our jobs as well when we were down in the E M O. It's a very busy place. We have calls coming in from all over, and of course from citizens and from our partners, community and corporate that we're working with. So having that time to do our jobs down there is vital to us, having the time to make a successful outcome for most of the decisions. Everybody around that table, it was the one exercise that I mentioned, Brad, or one evolution I mentioned to Brad, that I never really saw this take hold like that. It was a community actual idea. Anytime somebody had an idea on the table about how to solve the problems we were dealing with, everybody picked it up and looked for a way to make it successful as opposed to look for a way to tear it down. And it really, it really made the difference in everybody coming up on the successful end of that. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that moment and the opportunity to be part of. As Brad mentioned, our C A O and Director Sue Fraser, our C A O down in L, leading the way and feeding that measured calming influence in there, of course, at many of that times. So that was all very important, but the working together with, with everybody was an exceptional opportunity. And although we don't look forward to more events like this, we do look forward to more opportunities to do that.
Okay, Chair of Police, do you wish to say any words? Okay. Chair of Public Works, did you want to say anything?
During the Public Works Report, there is a report.
Mike, well.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, the, the agenda? Did you want to change, ask for a change, Counsel Twill? You want to go, just put on your mic.
After plan.
Okay, so you leave, are you leaving early? Is that what you're doing?
I'm not sure about my availability. I'll just gauge it as a mobile audience, so I just want to move it on.
Okay, are we, did, did you wish to make a change to?
Yes, I have another engagement, so I would, with permission, like to leave at the end of my planning report, your worship.
Counsel Dron, do you have something?
Yes, I'd like to, under New Business, add where the resolution process for budgeted and unbudgeted expenses. I was just wondering if I could add that to New Business to discuss it at the end?
Budgeted, unbudgeted expenses?
Yes.
Do you refer to discretionary expenses?
No, no, just an email about process.
Okay, okay. So we have the adoption of previous draft minutes, regular monthly meeting, September 12th, 2022, and the special meeting on September 26th, 2022. Moved by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel Revert. All this in flavor? Please raise your hand. Okay. Business arising out of the minutes. Counsel Dron.
Thank you. Last month, we discussed regarding the process of the payment to Chancellors. You know, I, I know we were supposed to get a resolution coming back, and I don't see it here. So.
It was a non-disclosure call.
I, I just don't know where to start, like.
Counsel Dron, that was a non-disclosure issue?
Thank you, Pastor.
Non-disclosure issue. I could ask our legal counsel to provide some guidance on that, can you? On the issue with Mr. Chandler?
Do you want to finish the question?
Donna, just, do you want to intervene, Donna? Did you want to provide guidance?
It's just a question on what, what transpired last month.
That will, that will be going to a closed meeting because included in the agreement was the non-disclosure clause that if at the end of the closed meeting, after discussion of counsel, we want to come out and do it in public. But when it was brought up at the, at the last moment, it was, I did not, I did not go to the non-disclosure clause section, and we should not have dealt with it in a closed, in an open meeting.
So we shouldn't know, we shouldn't have discussed it? So anything that was discussed and was supposed to come back doesn't come back in an open session?
It will come back to a closed session and account, and it will come back to a closed session and counsel can move on from there.
And what's this under, sorry? Like, non-disclosure, is that?
When we settled, could, could we do this at a?
We'll have to, Counsel Dron, we'll do that under a closed session. I think the information that was released at the last meeting
Yeah.
was not to be released in a public forum.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
No, that kind of takes that one off the agenda then.
Okay, so we have business arising from the minutes. Good to go? Okay, planning, Counsel McLeod.
Thank you very much, your worship. Good evening, counsel. Planning and Heritage Committee did not meet in October, so I have no minutes. The Planning Board met on October 3rd. Copies of the Planning Board minutes are included in the package. The Heritage Board was scheduled to meet September 26th, but the meeting was canceled and rescheduled due to the hurricane and the office closure. The new meeting scheduled has not been determined yet, therefore, there's no minutes for this report. The Design Review Board met on Tuesday, September 20th. Copies of the Design Review Board and minutes are included in your package. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee met on Friday, September 23rd. A copy of the minutes is included in your package. I have one resolution to put forward tonight for Planning and Heritage, and that is the 68 Park Street Resolution. And I would suggest that we probably should move it again, because what's, since we, since we met with a Planning Board, there were some further concerns from residents that we added to the resolution. So on your desk, there is the full, the full list of those items. And I think it perhaps be best before we do anything that, since the province is here, Alex, you can, that we bring the province in, and any questions from these resolutions, they could probably answer before we go any further. Would that be, make sense to you?
So just to clarify, again, I know Counsel Duffy mentioned this. Anyone that comes in to work with or speak with the manager of Planning, Development, and Heritage, Mr. Forbes, we'd have to direct everything through Mr. Forbes to allow them to speak, so.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah.
Are you all right with that, Donna, or is that out of process? That's okay. So.
And could I also ask, Counsel indulgent, that we have Chief of Police Brad McConnell added to the discussion as well?
Well, that would have, that should have happened at the, at the meeting for the Planning Board.
Well, under one of the, here, there's a, it's very much involves the police station, and they should be included in this resolution before, you know, there's probably questions there as well.
Do you have something to say?
I was just, I was just going to reiterate that Counsel McLeod had made it clear in the Planning Board meeting that we would have the opportunity to have Chief McConnell present for counsel to address any questions as well.
Counselor.
Yeah, I just want to, for clarity, more for public records, on the resolution where I moved the motion to come forward to counsel. It was just indicated that I was putting it forward with the stipulations that were presented initially, but I had other things that I'm glad to see on our desk tonight. So I didn't move the resolution based on those recommendations, and I just want that noted for public records.
Counsel Bernard.
First and foremost, I appreciate the, the initiative taken by the province of Prince Everett Island, the Honorable Matthew McKay, trying to find a solution, temporary solution, however you want to describe it. And I understand the motivation, and I applaud the province and all involved with this attempt to find a place for folks in our community that, that need the help. Now, having said that, there are residents here tonight from Park Street, from Beach Street, and we got to keep in mind two things. One is, and this is, these aren't criticisms, these are just insights. Number one, people in Park Street just got their power back yesterday, yesterday. So the ability for the neighborhood to communicate one another, whether it's through the internet, cell phones, whatever the case may be, they were, they were in a very precarious situation, not having that opportunity. Secondly, terms of communications. Now, again, this isn't, this isn't criticisms, but that residents in that particular neighborhood, that is Park Street, Beach Street, felt that. They didn't have adequate time in order for communications to be executed in a, in a timely manner, timely fashion. And some of them folks are here tonight. So, two things. One is, if we're going to hear from the province, representatives from the province, housing and social development, representation is going to be here, and of course, there was mention of the Police Chief Brad McConnell, then I would think in terms of an equal level playing field with regards to the process, the residents that are here should be given the same opportunity to come in, at least ask questions, state their case, state the issues that, that are going to directly affect them. And with that in mind, I don't know if there's enough time to do that here tonight, but I'll, I'll judge that as we move along, and then maybe, maybe, maybe we need to entertain the deferral to give the people an opportunity to have a community meeting, so that the residents, and again, I state, a lot of these residents just got their power back yesterday. And, and in terms of communications, and Mr. Forbes, I'm not trying to be critical, but just, and some of the, some of the feedback I've received from the community, they don't believe that the communications was adequate in a timely fashion. They didn't have the time. They really didn't have the time. So, again, I just bring that forward, you know, as, as, you know, on behalf of the constituency. And, and I think we, we owe it to the constituency to make sure communications are presented in a fashion, they truly understand what.
Thank you.
Is required, what's involved.
Yeah.
And what the impact and effect is on the community.
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
But just to reiterate, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If we're going to hear from represent, representation from the provincial government and the Chief of Police, with all due respect, sir, I do believe we owe it to the residents of the community to hear from them as well.
So I think, Ms., Counsel, Counsel McLeod, I, I think that we're, we're actually looking at a deferral to send this back to the Planning Board. That's a possibility. And then invite both sides. Counsel Twill, who sits, you're a member of that committee, you're still a member of that committee, you can be there, because we would have an opportunity to have them present both. What do you think about that?
Well, I, I think that's a great idea. If, if, if Alex, from the manager of Planning is, I, I understand exactly, the residents are a little, if everything happens with Aaron Bass, right? I did get out, and I tried to get as many people at the homes I could, and I wrote, you know, but unfortunately, the way the weather went, it didn't work out for everybody. So is that something that we can entertain? I would certainly.
Hold on. Just, Donna?
We should put the resolution on the floor before we.
Let's do that. That's what we have to wait for. That's a good point. Good point.
I just thought, you know, there's a, you know, I just think that.
Yeah.
The resolution needs a lot of answers, though. So I don't know. We'll just read the resolution, and then I'll.
Ask for a deferral. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Can you read the resolution? And Alex, if you wish to say anything after the resolution has been read? You can.
Moved by Counsel McLeod, and seconded by Counsel McKay, that the request for a major variance to allow a temporary use for two modular buildings, each containing 25 housing units, to remain on the property at 68 Park Street, P I D number 365593, for one year to provide temporary emergency housing, transitional housing, be approved, subject to the following conditions. Facility, facility operated by the Department of Social Development and Housing, P I Housing Corporation. It will include two temporary modular buildings, each building or facility with 25 beds. Accommodations include shared living space, communal washrooms, shower, showers, and laundry facilities. Hours of operation will be 8:00 P M. to 8:00 A M. seven days per week. Support staff and security will be on site 24 hours per day. Opaque fencing will be placed around the perimeter of the subject property for security and privacy. Modular units are designed for extreme temperatures and will provide safe and warm accommodations during the months. A security fence be erected from the existing fence along the trail to Park Street, as shown on the attached map. Shuttle service be, be provided to overnight residents from the site in the morning after 8:00 A M. to access the various services in the city that this population requires. The Department of Social Development and Housing, P I Corporation, provide a contact phone number or person, so that residents' concerns, so that residents' concerns can be conveyed to the appropriate person in a timely manner. A security plan will be provided from the Department of Social Development, P I Housing Corporation.
Okay. The resolution's on the floor. Counsel McLeod.
Thank you very much, Donna. Yeah, so with what we've just heard here this evening, I think it's just prudent for, for us to defer this. I think there's a lot here that the province will need to work on as well before we go any further with this. So I'll make a motion to defer this. We do, I don't know how long you want to wait to defer for, but I think we're going to need a couple of weeks.
Okay. So Counsel, Counsel McLeod, your deferral is to go back to the Planning Board, correct?
Go back to Planning, yeah.
Yeah. So Alex, could you give us a, sort of, an, an idea of timeline? Just one second.
Your worship, for clarity, are you asking that we re-notify and start the process and start it all over again?
Deferral.
Or are you just asking to go back to the Planning Board and get the clarity that you're seeing?
Yes. It goes back to the Planning Board to get the clarity that we're asking or requesting here tonight.
Right. And then in regard to the residents, how, are the residents to be involved in that process, or is it just the province?
It's open, like, in the past, I think you opened it to the P I Housing Corporation, so it would be open to the residents too, correct?
So, again, just, just for some clarity, where we are tonight, I mean, it came out of Planning Board with some terms and conditions.
Mm-hmm.
The residents and the Planning Board members asked for additional terms and conditions.
Right.
The province said they would contemplate them.
Right.
The province is ready, either this evening or at, at the deferral, to, to respond to those concerns that were brought up at the Planning Board. But I'm just trying to get for clarity as to how the Planning Board meeting would take place.
Okay. Just, Planning Board member, just one second. Counsel McKay.
And from my understanding, too, just for clarification, was that we invited the representatives from the government here tonight for counsel to have the opportunity to ask any more questions, to look at what we've kind of recommended through Planning Board, but also maybe to hear other concerns, talk with Chief McConnell, then be able to put maybe even more terms and conditions in after we had the opportunity to, to discuss tonight as a full counsel with the representatives from the province. To go back to Planning Board now and not, I mean, I would feel that residents were there, they spoke their concerns, government were there. We felt that this would be an opportunity for counsel to ask appropriate questions and get more clarification, and perhaps add more development agreements into the proposal. We know these shelters are due to arrive on November 1st. I know that they're going to be antsy, looking for, for a plan. I don't want to rush a plan, either counsel or Twill, but I think we have all the people here this evening to at least address some of our questions and concerns.
Okay. Counsel Twill.
Well, I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier. A lot of the residents, okay, I'm not trying to be critical, but a lot of the residents felt that communications were not executed in an adequate, in an effective, efficient manner. That's, that's the message I've received. They're here tonight. Power just come on here yesterday in this community. They weren't able to communicate with one another. I mean, houses are cold, no showers, there's no internet, couldn't really get together. So, so what I'm saying is that, and one of the reason why I was committed to a deferral was that the community can have an opportunity to come together with representatives from the provincial government, with representatives from the Planning Board. It's imperative that the community comes together, and they're there in a room, and they're fully integrated in the process, and being able, having the opportunity to ask the questions, bring up the issues, their concerns, so they feel quite compelled that they were truly heard. And, and again, they don't feel that.
Just turn off your mic, please. Okay. Counsel Twill, you did second the motion, right?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Okay. So Counsel Bernard, and then Counsel Revert. It's all in the deferral.
Thank you, your worship. And I, I did read through the planning minutes, and I see that they had resident members there, and I think there was a lot of good suggestions, and obviously, that's why the first resolution is taken out, and the second one is being put in. And I think there was a lot of good things added to the second resolution, and I think a lot of them from the minutes that I read came from resident members. I'm not sure the council wants to delay. We talked about the power just come on, and cold showers, these people have nowhere. The frost is on the ground. And I think, I don't think there's any problem passing this resolution. If you still want to have a public meeting, have a public meeting. What comes out of that is going to be additions, that the public may have concerns, and you can add that. But I don't think you want to delay this for another two weeks or whatever. I think, you know, you talk about what happened in the last couple of weeks with the storm, and, and like I said earlier, people had a power and what they went through. And now we know the last few nights, the frost is on the ground. So I think the province is here, the plan is laid out, planning did their due diligence, they sent out their letters to 100 meters. I understand that doesn't get to everybody, so you know what? If you want to have another meeting with the public, have it. But pass this and add to it later if something comes out of it. Because from what I read in the minutes, there was real good discussion, and there's a lot of good ideas that come out of it, being the shuttle service, the fencing, security. So I think they're off to a good start, and I think that we do pass it. And if you want to have the public meet, have it, and we'll see what other input comes out of it. Thank you.
Can I answer?
His head's hand up.
Thank you, your worship, and really kind of to piggyback off what Counsel Bernard just said, and really what Counsel Twill had said. It's a sensitive situation, no doubt about it, and a lot of people are impacted, and, you know, the people who live there, plus the people who need the shelter. You know, I, I think you kind of stole it a bit. For me, what I was going to say is, is really that the weather is getting cold. You know, it is, there is frost on the ground. It is, it's only going to get colder, and my fear is, is leaving it too long. You know, they, they have nowhere to go either. So, you know, if, if we can find a quick, a quicker solution than, than some prolonged, I think that's the right path we should be taking.
Counsel McLeod, then Counsel Yankoff.
Thank you very much. So, so the issue really here is, like, the, the whole bullet form thing here is, is more concerned about the homeless folks, and we all understand that. This is, I want to make sure I clarify that this is not about war tour, or the residents of Park and Beach saying, we don't want to, right? There's a letter in your package that clearly states from one of our owners of proprietors in the area, that if you're going to do it, do it right. And that's what this whole process is about, getting it right, right? The outreach center on Curling Club wasn't done right. There was a lot of missteps, a lot of missteps, right? So we've had, you know, the, the resident of, of those areas are wild, right? And as representatives of the residents, we need to do a better job, right? So when I say defer, I'm only doing, because really, to Counsel Bernard and to Counsel Revert's things, there's things in here that they only have, the, the province has only seen this today. So they haven't had a chance to respond to some of this. So I think it's only fair that we go back to the planning, two weeks, no more, because the process is still happening. I mean, they've already ordered these things without city council's approval, as far as, they're going full steam ahead here anyway. But at the end of the day, they need a permit. So let's get the permit done right, so that in future cases, not only this one, that we'll have it down, and the, the province will also know what the city is expecting, that we're not going to just sit here and take it. The residents need some assurance that they're going to be safe, right? That's the key here, right? It's not about what's inside the fence, it's what's going to happen outside the fence, right? We have 50 residents now that live in tents. Well, these are only going to be 50 modular homes. Where are the other people going to go? These are the questions that these people want to have answered, and a lot of them didn't get a chance to answer those questions. So we need to hear those. And I don't, it can't be a public meeting, because this is only for a variance, right? For one year, right? Then they can variance for a second year, and then it has to go to a public consultation if they want to go longer. But, so the process would be, what I'm asking is that we should do the planning over again, so that the residents can be heard at that meeting, and also it'll give the, the province time to answer these questions that have just come up. That's my suggestion as Chair of Planning and representing the residents of the City of Charlestown. Thank you.
Counsel Yankoff, just before you answer, Mr. Forbes.
I, I, if you want to include the residents, you're going to have to rerun this whole process. You're going to have to send the letters back out, because there really isn't, there isn't a mechanism without, you know, you, how, like, some residents will show up, some might not show up, you, you know, you, I'm just a little concerned about the process that, that, that we run, and we need to make sure that it's, you know, we're, we're consistent and rigorous in how we run that process. That's all my.
Counsel, Counsel Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. I sit on the Planning Board. We had a pretty lengthy discussion, and it was, it was actually an opportunity that the, the committee and the province really worked together with the residents. We had some pretty strong suggestions on what we wanted to see changed in the resolution, and they came with every one of our, of our recommendations. One was the 24-hour security, one was transportation plan, working, continuing to work with the province, or the city and the residents to ensure that everybody was safe, not only the residents, but those that are houseless as well. And, you know, we talked about that the, those that are houseless are able to bring their animals into the shelter, there's going to be, there's going to be people on staff 24/7 to help. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm worried that if we defer, that those that, that are in need are, you know, our needs are not going to be met. And I really think, as Counsel Bernard said, and Counsel Revert, that we can continue the dialogue with the residents. There's a phone number here that, you know, the province has given their word, that this is not just a phone number that no one will get to, that we can keep that communication going, and that the city, the province, and the residents can still continue to have that seat at the table together. So I am hesitant to support a deferral this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Revert.
Thank you, your worship. And again, going back to Counsel McLeod's comments, you know, I, I totally see his frustration, and, and parts of his argument I tend to agree with, absolutely. I have to believe that the pro, this is a moving, this is a moving document, that this document is going to be, I'll say, molded, whatever it may be, as the process kind of moves on during the winter, because this is new to, to everybody. I have to believe that the province, once this resolution is passed, is not going to just kind of wipe their hands clear and say, we're done, that, that there is going to be that continued dialogue, that continued conversation, continued collaboration with the city, to make sure that, that whatever happens negatively is, is corrected quickly. And so, I think, again, maybe I'm wrong, but the one meeting I attended a month, a month and a half ago or something, it just seemed that there was, there was a, you know, I'll say, a want in it for collaboration. And, yeah, unless I'm wrong, if someone can tell me I'm wrong, then, then please do.
You've spoken several times on this. Do you want to sum up?
Okay. So to answer that question, I guess, and to represent the residents again, when did the province communicate with the residents?
I don't, I'm asking.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to tell you. There's been no consultation with the residents, right? The residents didn't get much of an opportunity because of the storm. Everything come out, come out at once. There was five residents showed up. Half of the residents didn't know anything about the meeting. Half of the residents didn't know anything about the meeting. The lady that lives on the very bottom of Park Street, which is the closest to it, never even got a letter. So, I just think we're not doing it right. We need, I, I, the process, the province is still, go ahead and do what they're doing. It's going to take them, when they arrive, there's going to be a lot of work to be setting up, there's all that. And this collaboration can still happen, but again, it has to be done right. Just to give you an idea, this neighborhood is already, is affected. Two calls to Public Works this weekend to pick up needles. The two ticket booths that are at the civic center entrance going up into the rink, there's people living in them, okay? And I thought the lady that lived two doors up thought we had power, because they didn't, we were going to run a power cord up to her from the ticket booth. But it turned out, Public Works got there, it was the lovely smelling booth you'll ever have, right? And it was residents. So, the residents have been dealing with this, right? They're fed up already, but they don't even need that, right? So, this is why Council Twill gets it and I'm getting it, because he's been involved with this since the start with his problem and his work. So, the problem is that these residents just don't want to take somebody's word, right? They want to see, they want to hear from the people that are making the plans, that this is going to work because, you know, there's, one of the ladies in, you know, has a paralympic child. She has to go to work. She has to, to be able to afford. So, who's looking after her child? That's your question. Who's going to make sure that her child is safe? When, when this, because this is something that's being brought on the residents. The residents isn't asking for it, they're just asking for security. Let's make sure we do this right. And if it takes another month, it takes a month. But these folks are, it's going to be a month before they're in anyway, right? There's all kinds of solutions to why they're in tents right now. Like, why aren't they in the Curling Club, folks? Why can't the beds be made in there until this gets held over? There's lots of, you know, like, everything is falling back on the City of Charlottetown again, right? We didn't cause this problem. We're trying to handle it. We want to handle it, but we need the help, we need the support, and the residents should come first.
Okay. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Council McCabe.
Thank you. And, and I, again, I hear, I'm with everybody in hearing the frustrations because I have lots of questions and concerns and I want to ensure that it's rolled out properly. But we also heard at Planning Board, this is a one-year variance that they've applied for. It's a short-term solution to a problem that we know is growing in our city in particular. It's going to require long-term planning with collaboration between both city and provincial level of government to try and come up with this. There was indication that, an ask if a residence could be part of a solution on a board. It was agreed that that would happen. This is not a one-all, be-all. We know that this is something that we're going to have to do a lot of work on for the next while. We have questions around how we're going to collaborate with our police services. That's why we do need to bring Brad in. Can we, what do we need from the province in order to sustain? I agree. We don't want units dropped off and hands wiped dry to say, "There, we've done our part and now it's the city's problem." We know we can't do everything by ourselves. We have to collaborate, we have to work together, but it's a one-year variance until we have that opportunity to try to come up to a long-term solution.
Okay. Council Yankoff, then Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just going to suggest that, you know, we do have the province here and, you know, that was a recommendation from Planning Board, that the province would be here along with Chief McConnell to continue on with the process that Alex outlined is the process and could be an opportunity for us to, you know, have them here to answer some of the questions of those councillors with concerns.
Council Yankoff, if you open it up, you have to open it up for all. That's why the deferral is to go back to the Planning Board, to have those invitees from the public, from the province, and so forth. Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I know it's a difficult, difficult issue, but at the end of the day, uh, the province is asking for a variance. It's their property. They own the property. They're asked for a variance. I understand we went through the process. The province, I understand, is out front. I don't know why we can't come in and answer some of these questions, because as Council McLeod said, the things in the back, I heard they didn't agree with it yet or they don't, don't know if it's even there? And you're saying that they'd agree to it? So, why don't we bring them in? Two things. Why, why don't you bring them in and see if, see if they agree to it? But the other issue, why can't the province put on their own public meeting? And explain, it's, it's, it's their project. They're trying to make approval from what they've already started. So, this variance that they're asking us is for the modular buildings so that people will have a place to sleep when the weather gets cold. So, if they're just out front, why don't you bring them in and get some confirmation?
Council Twill, if we bring them in, we have to bring in the neighbors too, because...
Questions for council. This is questions for council. Will they be putting on a public meeting?
Well, no, you can't, as I said, that the best process, part of this process would be to go back to the Planning Board and have all the parties that would come in at once. Because, again, as Council Duffy said, soon as you open your council meetings up to introductions and feedback from various groups, it, it, it sets a precedent. So, that's why the Planning Board would be the best vehicle to have this process go forward. That's, that's, so, the, the deferral is on the floor. Is the question called? Question called? Question's called? Okay. All those in favor of the, no, questions, questions, all those, all those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. We have, okay, all those against the deferral?
Two, three, four.
Six, four.
No, okay, all right.
Okay. All those for the deferral, please raise your hand.
One, two, three.
Six. All those against? Four. Those against? Council Yankoff, Council Revert, Council Bernard, and Council McCabe. So, Donna?
Uh, there's only one resolution, Your Worship?
Sorry, Your Worship, just, just a quick question, though. Um, what, so what is the process from here? This, this is, this is the part that I, so, we're sending it back to Planning. Are we restarting from scratch? Because if we are restarting from scratch, this is not going to be done in, in one month.
What's that?
So, now we're into, now we're going to be into January. So, so we got to be crystal clear on what, what the process is. I know it's easy to say set it back to Planning for, so I just, I, I need to understand.
Mr. Forbes, can you give us an idea, a framework on the process going back to Planning Board?
So, you know, if, if you want to include the public, those letters should go back out to the public, uh, and then you're going to be, you're going to be into, uh, you need 14 clear days from the day the letter goes out to make sure that they've had enough time. Uh, then we're going to have to prepare another report. Uh, it will be on for sometime in November and then you'll be making a decision potentially the second Monday of November.
Correct.
Yep.
Point of clarification.
So, just before we go, is, is that clear, Council Revert, what the process is?
It is. It's, it's, I guess, is that the wish? Can we, can we, can we speed it up or, I mean, I think it's unfair for a new council to step in December and have to wrestle with, with this.
So, can...
I won't be here, but...
What's, what's the way we can short-circuit the process to get it back to the, this council? Mr. Forbes.
Well, it's, it's, it just has to do with, these processes are set up and they're supposed to be run the same way every time. And any kind of a hybrid, you're going to run a risk of, if somebody wants to appeal it, then we're into trouble in regard to how we ran the process. So, that's my only concern. I mean, it's, you, you folks just need to direct me how you want it run, but I think if you want to run the system the way that you're suggesting tonight, is that those letters have to go back out, because somebody, if you just randomly tell people to show up at a meeting, but somebody didn't get a letter in the next round or they didn't hear about it, uh, then it becomes problematic, so, uh...
Council, sorry, Council McCabe.
My point of clarification was at Planning Board, we were told basically that the province would be here tonight to answer any questions that we had as a council, so that anything we had concern about could be addressed here tonight without having to go back through the whole process. I understand that not everybody might have known, if the letters went out to the 100, what our, what our regulation is. I think there were maybe six residents here that spoke that night.
There was 12, 12 letters that were sent to adjacent property owners and they were primarily commercial property owners because it's, it's, it's down in an industrial area on the periphery of a residential area.
But at no time was it indicated that we would have to open up our council meeting to everybody. It was indicated that the, the province would be here tonight to provide clarification and to hear what our concerns were as city council.
So, the deferral's been voted on. End up, just end up.
Just to clarify that, so, these resolutions that are on the back page are added points to the resolution?
Yeah.
The province hasn't seen, like, or they have, they haven't seen them since 3 o'clock this afternoon. So, how can we sit here and ask them, "Okay, what's your security plan?" Right? They're going to need time to answer these. That's the, that's the...
Let's wrap up.
Yeah, Your Worship, you know, again, at least in my mind, so, at the Planning Board, staff had their standard terms and conditions. Uh, then there was a lot of discussion, to-ing and fro-ing with the public and the board members. The board members asked a number of questions to the province. Uh, it was, you know, fairly fluid. The province basically implied we will take them under consideration, but it kind of put some staff people on the spot to speak on behalf of their political masters. Uh, so, what, what I did is, I, I've been communicating with the province. Some of them, they, they clearly indicated we're okay, but what the terms, some of those terms and conditions this evening are what I perceived is what the, the implication was from the board members and councillors that were at the meeting. That was their expectation. So, but there's a couple there this evening in your package that they may not have signed off on, but they're here this, this evening to comment as to whether they're, they're agreeable to those. There's a couple that are in there that, that were more, possibly more onerous than they thought, but, but that's, you, it was, it was meant to have that discussion.
Yeah. And again, Mr. Forbes, this is all about trying to work with our provincial partners and if we can clarify that these add-ons or we get some input, response back from the government of Prince Edward Island, the Department of Social Development and Housing, that when we go to the, back to the Planning Board and have the, the meeting and discuss it with members of the provincial government, that is, the Department of Social Development and Housing, and the residents from that area and other interested, interested people, it will be in the Planning for Board, uh, framework, not what we're looking at other than that. Thank you.
One quick question. So, so if we were to put the letters out tomorrow, or on the webpage, the website and everything else, can I, as the councillor, run the letters to everybody? And it's still on the webpage, it's still being advertised normally, but can that fast-track it?
The, the, the whole idea...
So that we can get it in before the end of the month?
No.
It's kind of like you need to run the process the same every time.
Well, there was this little word called Fiona, right?
Yeah.
There was a little storm in the middle there.
I, I, look, I'll, I'll take it under advisement. I mean, I'm, I'm not here to, but, you know, I, I don't want to advise you on something that legally, that I'm going to be accounted for later, that I shouldn't advise you.
Right. So, if we could do that tomorrow, but would that not help speed the process up some?
Again, we have to be careful about the, the appellate process, someone appealing this decision. Okay. That's the report?
I advised.
Okay. Anything else in your report?
No, except we, so we just made a motion to defer.
Defer.
So, do I need a motion?
No.
To do a defer? No, we have to wait for Alex to say.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay. That's your report and you have to leave?
I do have to leave.
Your Worship, just for...
Sorry.
No, you go ahead. I'm sorry.
It may be helpful and, you know, the, the lawyer and the CIO here, it may be, it may be helpful to say, to defer this application and re, re-notify the residents, because sometimes the deferral can just go back to Planning Board and then come back, but, but that, that's different than what you're asking for tonight. I mean, deferrals that go back to Planning Board are for sort of a quick sign-up or they've discussed something before. It's not about, again, including the public, because once you bring the public in, that process has got to be, again, the same, the letters go out, people are notified.
No, no, just, okay, guys, we're, we're getting confused here. All it means is the resolution was deferred, how we execute it will be, follow the process that Mr. Forbes just suggested. There will be a re, how can I put it? A, another Planning Board to discuss this issue with the neighbors and the provincial government. That's all we need to know. Okay? Let's move on. Go. You're going?
One procedural question, Your Worship. Again, if you're deferring it to go back, this is the part I'm missing, is that if we're talking about sending letters back out, then we're restarting the process, but, but you're restarting a process with a deferral of a, of a live...
Right. So, that's why I think it's, it's too...
This is going to get confusing. Either, I think you have to either, if you're going to restart the process, I think you need to, to terminate this one and restart it, or, or defer it for a different purpose other than meeting with the residents, because that's a restart of the process.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's a little clearer to say to direct the staff to restart the process and then it will eventually get back here when you, as a part of that restart.
Donna, just, let's...
Your Worship, you've already done it. We have a, it was deferred to Planning Board and, and, and that's what, it's done. It's, it's done. It's going to Planning Board. It'll be restarted, the process. I, I, that will probably be fought, that'll probably be fought out over in Iraq, I would think.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on. Strategic priorities under planning? Oh, you want to go to yours? Sorry. You're planning to go too, right? Thank you, Mr. Forbes. So, you're going to, uh, environment, environment and sustainability? Council Twill?
Before I get into my prepared text, I want to take this opportunity to talk about what's transpired from the lens of an elected official over the last two weeks, moving in now into our 17th, 18th day. This is a very dramatic experience for our residents and for me personally, because on many occasions you felt so helpless, when you, when you really and truly wanted to help people in the community. The devastation, some of the word adjectives that I used to describe this, this event, devastation, annihilation, disbelief, um, and, and people are still dealing with it. We're still dealing with it. We're not out of the woods by no means. I, I, before getting into particulars, I do want to thank our, uh, city work crews. I do personally want to thank, uh, all of the electrical people that are involved. These, these individuals are putting in 16-hour days. I see them, uh, in the community. I've talked to them, even tried to persuade them to, uh, to, you know, go over, two streets over, would you please try to put the power on for these people? As the chief of police said, we're obviously going to have to do a post-mortem when this is all over. Obviously, there's going to have to be changes. There's no doubt about it. There's going to have to be changes. We're going to have to look at, uh, our tree bylaw, how we administer the tree bylaw, what's included in the tree bylaw. I think we're going to have to collaborate, collaborate with our residents. I can tell you, a lot of people that felt strongly about trees prior to this event, some have a different perspective after this event. some have a different perspective after this event. There's so much to talk about, the warm-up facilities. I was there. What I'd like to see more, absolutely, especially to the marginalized constituents in our community through no fault of their own, not having the opportunity for transportation, not having the opportunity for a hot meal, not having the opportunity for a hot chocolate, transportation, all of those things. These aren't criticisms, these are just assessments, my own personal assessments. And when we're going through an event like this, we have to be able to reach all demographics. I'm not so sure that happened this time, but we, we have to take all of that information and look at it in our post-mortem, and then, from there, come up with recommendations that truly have to be implemented. So, having said that, I certainly appreciate all the work that's been done, as our CAO reminded me today, you know, the city's EMO committee, I mean, they put a lot of time and effort into, you know, the room that they're in downstairs, and I appreciate that, I really do, Donna. But this was a horrific event.
Yep.
A horrific event. So, having said all of that, I am grateful. I am grateful, but there's a lot of work to be done. Once again, and I want to thank you for the notes, Jessica, these are Jessica's notes. I just have the honor and privilege to read them out, verbatim. Once again, the monthly transit ridership numbers have surpassed. September saw 92,171 transit riders. Also, transit has officially completed 17 years of service in Charlottetown. 17 years. The city would like to congratulate T3 on this significant milestone. The focus of the Environment and Sustainability Department this month has been related to urban forestry impacts of the hurricane Fiona. Their work involves fielding a large rise in calls and emails, delivering tree inspections, visiting all city streets to identify tree hazards, and coordinating work with contractors from the province of Prince Edward Island and New Brunswick. Environment and sustainability staff have also worked at the warming centers to offer Environment and sustainability staff will be supporting the province on the delivery of a residential program to assist homeowners with tree removals and cleanup. And I will read some of the information on what this program offers. And Donna, I know you're instrumental in working on, and Jessica, in working on this particular program, this new program that I believe our residents will be able to take advantage of. Starting today, Charlottetown residents can apply for the new program online or by phone. Next, city staff will assess the applications and conduct site visits and evaluate reported damage in order to prioritize impacted properties. City contracted crews will be deployed to address and clear damages from these properties. With the program, what the program covers, Fiona related uninsurable losses and damage to residential properties. These include trees falling in yards, damaged trees at the risk of falling, and basic debris cleanup on private property in Charlottetown. How to apply, Charlottetown residents can report storm-related tree damage online at www.cherlottetown.ca/fiona, or by calling 902-629-2594 during business hours. So I think this program today, this launch today, as I said to our CAO, I believe it's an excellent start, and God knows what other, what other programs will evolve as we get through this process. But I can tell you, there's a lot of people in our community need help. They really need help. They don't have insurance for, you know, these trees of these magnitude, the size of these trees, I mean, they're just, they're massive. And I really believe that our residents will be appreciative, they'll be relieved, not appreciative, more so relieved, that our city is going to be there to help them. And I believe that we should do all in our power. And if that means improvise, Donna, I believe in being, improvisation, I think goes a long way, because our efforts are truly sincere.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, your worship, I'll try my best to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Councillor Twill. And I did see that program announced today, and did talk to a couple of constituents about it to let them know, as you said earlier, there's a number of huge trees, and people are wondering what they're going to do and how they're going to afford it. My question to you is, for those that already cut up the trees on private property, will they get any kind of a rebate?
I need to catch the last part.
If, for those that had the trees down on their property-
Yes.
That was, that's uninsurable-
Yes.
And they already paid somebody, they're coming to cut it up, will they get reimbursed?
I'm going to, that's a technical question, I wish I could answer, but since we have Jessica here, our CAO, could you please answer that question?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. So my understanding is if you've already paid a contractor for work on your private property, you could submit that invoice to the province for reimbursement. If there's debris on your property that you want cleaned up still and the work's still there, they can request that through us, and we can go assist with the cleanup from here on in.
Okay. So if they've got the receipts, they can submit them?
Yeah.
And so they ought to submit them to this program?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Councillor Bernard, again, big thanks to the province, because they are funding the program, we're administering it, administering the program through Environment and Sustainability with Jessica and her team, and I think Jessica will be looking at four teams going out?
There'll be three crews from New Brunswick, working specifically on private property.
Okay, three crews. Sum up, Councillor Twill?
And this, you know, this recovery plan, this particular recovery plan is unprecedented, but I think it's, I think it's fantastic, it's being able to adapt and adjust to, to the response we've received from the residents. I think this will go a long way. I think it's an excellent starting point, and I look to, you know, communicating with the residents and officials here at City Hall to try to ease our residents back into what's was, once was a normal life. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it. Councillor Twill, thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Do you have a question?
Well, not questions, I suppose now that it's been brought up, it's probably a good time to say it, but I have to say that as an elected official, I'm proud of the way I've seen the response. I'm proud of the way these workers have worked together. The silos were broken down, didn't matter what department you worked for, they're all helping out with each other, they're all looking to share equipment, they were all out to help our residents and help them get out. This is basically a catastrophe to a lot of people. This was shocking, and I mean, you know, nobody would envision the damage, their wildest dreams. And we knew there was going to be damage, but whoever dreamed of the damage and the potential for this type of damage to happen in the city of Charlottetown. But as elected official, seeing the workers working seven, eight, 12 hours straight, 12-hour days, and seeing the volume of debris that they've picked up so far, and seeing all the businesses drop their contracts, bring in their equipment to help the city of Charlottetown get out of this as soon as possible, seeing all the people come from other provinces, you've got to give kudos to a lot of people. I mean, this was a total team effort, right down to our constituents who, God, they're bringing them out meals, and they're bringing Tim Hortons cards, and everything, it's so appreciative. But I know for me, and sometimes it takes things like this, you know, whether it's a police issue, and the police are our heroes, this particular issue, I think there's a lot of heroes out there, and I think for me, I'm very proud as elected official to see what I see and see the way these teams have come together, and you talk about the EMO guys, no Thanksgiving and no holidays for them, they work around the clock, and that's with a lot of the workers. So I just want to say thank you to all the work of the city of Charlottetown. And you're right, Councillor Twill, we have a long way to go yet, but we're certainly off to a good start. So, thank you.
Yes, Councillor Bernard, a lot of leaders showed up, and a lot of leaders made things happen by rolling up their sleeves and cleaning up. Jessica, and thank you for all the work you're doing. Okay. So we go back to, I believe it's, oh, strategic, and that's Councillor Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship. We did not meet, as we were supposed to meet two days, but the hurricane hit, so that didn't help a whole lot. The youth engagement advisory did not meet also, there's no resolutions. And I would also like to echo everyone's comments. On my street alone, there was private contractors come in that the city hired and everything along that line, and people were going by the line, the crews and everything, and everybody was saying thank you. Like, they didn't slow down to talk to them as their emails were, but they slowed down long enough to say thank you very much, you're doing a great job. I know my own little street, it was a day and a half just before they get everything cleaned up, and I have nothing bad to say about them, they did a fantastic job, they're so cordial and everything along that line. So thank you again to all the staff and all the outside companies, and their CAO, and Sue, and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to finance. Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. Our committee met, there's a report in your package. We do have one resolution for council to consider, and if there's any questions or comments, I'll do my best to answer them. Thanks.
Okay, Donna, do you want to read the resolution?
Moved by Councillor Cody and seconded by Councillor Rivera, that in accordance with the recently revised five-year capital investment plan for expenditures under the Canada Community Building Fund Direct Allocation Program, the city rescinds its intent to use CCBF-DA funds for the Strategic Growth Project. That project has been completed via other funding.
Question call? No, that's, just passed, that's, okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero.
Moved by Councillor Cody and seconded by Councillor Twill, that the 2022-23 Transit operating budget be increased by $140,000 to cover anticipated increases in fuel subsidy costs.
Questions call? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Human Resources Communications and Administration Committee, Councillor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. The Human Resource Communications Administrative Committee had a special meeting on September 22nd and a regular meeting on October 4th. The minutes are in your package. We have two resolutions for your consideration, and I would draw your attention to one specific one, and that is the resolution for the governance review. And the purpose of this governance review is to review and make recommendations on the city's current governance structure to align with best practice, comparable municipal standards, policies and bylaws. The work will also focus on the organizational structure and specifically the leadership team. I know our committee's worked hard on this, and I'm excited to bring this one forward as well as our second resolution. If anyone has any questions for me, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Councillor Duran?
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Yankoff, for your, for your report. I noticed last month, Councillor Twill asked if the former CAO was on, was still on the city payroll, and the RMEAR responded it's a confidential agreement, and he's paying, he's being paid according to that 2016 agreement. Now, I've never seen anything in the agreement that says the former CAO has to be on the payroll after he was terminated from council. There's nothing in that contract that prevents council from being told whether or not he is still on the payroll, and to suggest otherwise, you know, it's almost a way of misleading council and its residents, because the residents want to know. So if he's on the payroll, are we paying for two CAOs right now? And that affects the city budget. So we should be told. I'm asking again, is he on the payroll or not? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Duran. I think I will defer that question to either Donna Waddell or our legal, or I don't really know how to answer that question.
No, it's the same answer. It's following the resolution that was passed, March 29th, 2016, and it's a confidential agreement. It's, it's an agreement between employee and employee, employee and employer. Am I correct to say that? Yeah. That's, that's the answer.
But the terms, I understand, are confidential, which, but this is not about the terms. This is a simple question. You know, when we voted at that meeting to terminate, that was supposed to be over and done with. I'm just wondering about the financial implications that are following us. Did we not sever the ties, terminate, or are we continuing on through another budget? That's the question I'm asking. And we, when we go back to confidential, you know, I'm not saying the terms of the agreement, I'm just, I thought when we voted, that was it, but I've been led to believe otherwise, that there's still an ongoing financial burden towards the city of Charlottetown. If it's still on the payroll, then there's more, there's more holidays, sick time, it costs the residents more. So, you know, when we terminated and made that, that decision, that was supposed to be done. I just, I just can't understand if it's continuing on. Now, this could be illegal-
Yeah, it is.
Illegal, so can you, so-
So she'll, we'll ask Karen, we'll ask Karen, but again-
That's all I ask.
This, this could be seen as breach of confidentiality, but Karen, do you want to give a-
Well, we asked it last month, we didn't get an answer.
She's right here.
Sure, so if you were to reveal- If you were to reveal the terms upon which the resolution of council is being executed, which was to follow the requirements that had been agreed upon in 2016, then that would be the same as making public the confidential terms. So typically, that would not be something that we would talk about in a public meeting. And there is the resolution, the resolution did say, here's what city is to do, and as far as I'm aware, that is what the city is doing, so there would be no more of a financial impact on the city than there would have been on the day the resolution was passed. It's not like there's now extraordinary accumulations of obligations by the city. They were, they were fixed on the date that the resolution was passed.
This is your second?
Second question, councillor, and again-
Again, if I'm out of order for asking this-
You are.
I apologize, I don't need you to tell me, I-
No, well, she just told you.
The legal told me. I don't need you to tell me.
Yeah, no, that's-
But I apologize to everybody here in council, if I crossed the line in asking a question that I couldn't get an answer to. So now you've clarified it, and I, and I thank you.
Yeah. Again, we have to be respectful, respectful to each other, as I show to you and everybody here in this chamber. Councillor Twill?
Just on that, and a follow-up question to our solicitor. So is there not a difference between the contract and the settlement? So, contract was signed when the previous CAO was hired, but council passed a resolution, right, to come to a settlement, right? And that was done by a vote of council. So without disclosing what's in the settlement, can we not at least get a clarification as to whether or not the previous CAO is on the payroll? Like, questions are being asked in the community, and that's, that's, that's why I arise. I mean, you know, people are asking me, and I said, look, I'm not 100% sure. So I will ask that question. So can we not get a clarification and tell the community if the former CAO is still on the payroll?
Councillor Twill-
And again, this is based on, this is based on the settlement, not the contract, the settlement.
But again, what we voted on, on May 11th, was what was outlined in the contract that was signed on March 29th and passed unanimously by this, by the former council. So Karen, do you want to give him the same answer? She's going to give, yep, don't forget to put your mic on.
I guess my answer hasn't, hasn't changed, Councillor Twill. I do appreciate the question. I don't actually have an answer for you, so I couldn't give you the factual answer even if, if I wanted to, but to me, when council passed that resolution, that fixed what was being paid. It hasn't grown over time, it is, it is what it is, and if we're going to talk about the execution, like what the terms are, one of the terms would be how the payment that was agreed to be made by council was to be, was to be done. So that would be talking about the terms of his employment contract slash the terms that, that council agreed to in the settlement. So that would typically be something that, that we would do.
Second question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Count. So we voted on the resolution, there was a settlement, council approved, majority council approved the settlement, and in that settlement is the terms on how the former CAO is to be paid, right, as you understand it. Okay, I, I didn't understand it that way at the time, and that's why I arised last month, and that's why I arise again here today, was because, because people in the community are asking the questions. Is the former CAO still on the payroll?
Okay, thank you. Resolutions are, no, you've already asked the question. No, second, second time, reading the resolutions.
This is a whole different question.
No, but it's-
You're allowed to ask more than one question.
Councillor Duran, let's read the resolutions, and then you can go back to your question. Please.
I think that, I opened it up that anyone could ask questions about my committee report. We don't have a resolution on the floor, and I believe once a resolution is read, then we can only ask two questions, but I think at this point, he can have-
I understand that, but we can run this meeting for a long time if we keep getting up and asking questions, because again, you're always, you're always concerned, hold on, let me finish, you're always concerned about how long these meetings go on. Let's go with the second question on this matter.
That's all I wanted. Like, why were you saying that?
Can you ask your question?
You're allowed to ask more than one question.
Ask your question.
Okay, thank you. Again, in our, in our last regular council meeting, I asked- Again, in our last regular council meeting, I asked about the hiring of the director position and was concerned that the new position was not advertised and that the interviews weren't being held. I was told that everything was followed, all the processes were followed, and for a contract position, you don't need to go through the staffing bylaw. That's the way it's written. So either the staffing bylaw applies or the procurement policy applies, either one. If this was a contract and the staffing bylaw doesn't apply, why wasn't this contract put out to tender that required by the city's procurement policy? And the reason I'm asking is the process. Like, I asked for clarification, and you know, everything was followed. You either go staffing bylaw or procurement policy bylaw. I don't think there's anywhere that you can give out a contract. I may be mistaken. I don't know if you can answer me, the manager or legal. I'm just, I just want to put this to bed and just say, okay, you know what? This is black and white, you know? Could someone please give me the appropriate answer? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron. I think I'll either defer that to our manager or our CAO, but great question. Thank you.
Just, do we want to get a legal opinion for that, Donna? Or do we want an opinion from you? Because the chairman has put.
I think we had a legal opinion when we start, before we hired her on a contract position. I phoned the city solicitor and I asked her about a contract position and whether or not I could hire someone on a contract position for a limited period of time, and the answer was positive at that time.
Just, this might.
The chair wants the questions. Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate that. It's just, you know, a return question. I mean, I don't know why we have to go down this road every time someone asks a question, but anyway.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking, you know, if this is a legal, you have legal approval, our legal team said, yes, you can do that, then I'll sit down and be quiet. But it's supposed to be under the staffing bylaw or procurement bylaw, one or the other. So is legal ready to say, yes, they can do the contract position, and you don't have to follow this stuff? Is that correct? Am I correct in saying that?
In fairness to the city solicitor, Counsel Dron, I didn't ask her about the procurement agreement. I asked her about the staffing bylaw.
So, thank you. So again, we're here. I'm not, like, I'm not a, I'm just frustrated, the process, the process we're always talking about. And I go home and I get a call, they're not following the process. So where are we in this process? Do we have to go out to tender and re-interview? Was the process not followed? Maybe we can get a legal opinion very quickly on this, and maybe, you know, the staffing bylaw was not followed, but the procurement bylaw, you know, maybe that should be looked at. Like, we have to do it right here, and you know, time is getting down. That's why I'm trying to bring this to the forefront in the process, that you cannot do what you're doing, in my opinion. I may be totally wrong and out of context here and shouldn't be asking this question, but if someone could just ask, is it under procurement or staffing, and then I won't ask again. Thank you.
So Donna, just on reference to the procurement policy, that's what he's making reference to, correct? So the procurement policy, I have a copy here in front of me. The city of Charlottetown recognizes that taxpayers of this city expect and have the right to receive a high level of service at the lowest possible cost. And it goes through to one page, that's what I have here. So how does hiring someone under the procurement, hiring a staff person fall under the procurement process? Does it? Donna?
I don't have it in front of me, Your Worship, but it never occurred to me to hire a person under the procurement agreement.
Yeah, here it is, right here.
I think what he's saying is the procurement is any services we access over $25,000 is supposed to come back to council. And correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Dron, if that's what you're trying to indicate. But I thought procurement is more when you're buying things versus hiring.
It says all purchases of goods and services. I wouldn't think staffing would be a service.
So could we just get a legal opinion on that quick, or no? Or, you know?
Quick.
Sorry, we'll have to ask her to review what you're asking.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for taking too much time, but I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Any more to your report there, Counsel Yankov, or can we go to the resolutions? Okay. Thank you.
Moved by Counsel Yankov and seconded by Counsel Cody, that the city of Charlottetown accept the highest scoring proposal for KPMG in the amount of $84,772 excluding taxes and related expenses to provide consulting services per governance review file number 2022-150, and that the total estimated project in the cost of $84,772 excluding taxes and related expenses be approved and funded out of the 2023 operational budget as per the attached documents effective October 11th, 2022.
Question's called. No, Counsel Twill has a question.
The governance review, so will that look at reviewing each department? Will that look at the organizational chart here in the city of Charlottetown, the structure, the terms of reference, looking at each department, doing an assessment and evaluation of the functionality of each department, and how that lines up with the organizational chart? And what do we hope to accomplish by this expenditure in the governance review? And how independent, how independent will the governance review truly be in terms of what we're going to be voting on here in terms of this expenditure?
Thank you, Counsel Twill. The copy of the governance review scope of work was included in the package. It's quite detailed. So I guess if you need further clarity besides that, I might refer that to either our manager or our CAO. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this will not delve, or sorry, Your Worship, this will not delve down into each and every department. It will be looking at, looking at the higher levels within the department, and you're right, it is an organizational review, looking at what positions there should be at the leadership level and down into the department. It may, it is not a services review. It's a governance report, as we discussed on the very first meeting that I met with you. The consultation process, you can see they're, they would hope to be having discussions with elected officials, management staff, review comparable municipalities. It will be a, it's an governance organizational review.
Second question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Donna. Okay, so it's not a departmental review, okay? It's not a departmental review. It's a, I think if I can use your words, it's a review of the leadership in each department. So in that assessment and evaluation, will that determine or will that conclude the delivery of services that are delivered out to the community, whether it's public works, whether it's police, whether it's fire, water and sewer, parks and recreation, environment sustainability, all of the different departments that currently exist here at the city of Charlottetown? Will we be measuring, or will this review be measuring the delivery of services out to the community? So that will give us, or we'll look at, you know, what standards exist, as you pointed out, in other municipalities, and what standards we should be aspiring to. So will that review give us that information?
As I said, no, it is not a service review.
No.
It is not a service review. It is a review, it's an organizational review, not a service review. Recommendation could be that a service review be completed, that type of thing. It's not, that's what the resident.
Counsel Twill, you've already asked.
I just want to.
Yeah.
I just want to, I just want to make my former public administration professor, Don McCormick, proud.
Thank you, and he would be proud. Okay, question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine, zero. Give another one there, Donna?
Yes, Your Worship. Sorry. Moved by Counsel Yankov and seconded by Counsel Cody, that the city of Charlottetown accept the managed detection and response and endpoint detection and response MDR and EDR RFP to the highest scoring bid ISA cybersecurity in the amount of $30,600 per year for three years for a total of $91,800 plus applicable taxes as per the attached document effective October 11th, 2022.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine, zero. And is that it, Counsel Yankov? Okay, thank you. Next report is Counsel Reverde.
Thank you, Your Worship, but I stand in front of you with such a sense of pride as Chair of Protective Services after what's happened over the last couple of weeks. Protective Services, as you can imagine, we hasn't met since the last meeting. There is no resolutions for consideration, but I do want, I do want to kind of elaborate, if you will, on what the Chief McConnell and Deputy Chief Mamie had briefed us earlier. So Chief McConnell had sent me this today, and I'm just going to read it verbatim. Says Hurricane Fiona was the strongest and most impactful tropical storm to hit Canada on record. In the early hours of the storm, our police service responded to dozens of calls related to the storm and assisted fire services in many more ways. The nature of calls for the police assistance varied from people trapped in their homes to assisting people trying to locate loved ones in chaos. A special mention should go, or should be given to emergency police fire dispatchers Jeff Crosswell and Kelly Gel, who worked during the peak hours of the storm when the demand for emergency services were at their highest. In the hours and days post-Fiona, our police services have played a vital role in traffic and crowd management and assisting those most vulnerable in, through those difficult days. We have all assisted our partners, both internally and externally, to assist in the assessment and recovery phase of this historic event. That was Chief McConnell. Thank you for that. Corinne, it's kind of funny, she said my eyesight may be getting a little bit bad. I'm thinking that she's right. I'm trying to read this, and I'm like, whoa.
What about your hair? How's your hair?
Reading glasses.
How's your hair? That's good, too?
This is a line, isn't it, Grace? Now, she knows, she knows I admit to my, to my rights.
Okay.
Forty-nine. From Deputy Chief McConnell, sorry, yeah, from Mamie, sorry. Charlottetown Fire Department initiated duty crews at 9:00 PM Friday, September 23rd, 2022. Thirty-six members, eighteen at each station, maintained operational readiness responding to all matter of emergency responses for eleven full days and 264 calls. Remember that number for a second. As the hours grew into the days, members were able to switch out with each other to maintain the duty crew status. This unprecedented call volume, okay, which is equal to one-third of last year's total calls, in eleven days, our fire department did as many, one-third of the calls that they did all of last year. That's pretty, that's pretty amazing, what you think about the numbers. So thank you, Chief. Was extraordinary both in the number of calls and the safe response to all. Crews did an exceptional job of triaging calls as received, always directing resources to the determined priority based on life safety matters. Both fire inspectors established a 12-hour shift schedule to manage the volume of work and follow-up visits for life safety inspections throughout the many days following the event. Members performed rescues, firefighting activities, forcible entry, and search tactics, and many medical first response practices. Charlottetown Fire Department also assigned chainsaw teams to public works in effort to clear the downpoles and trees, literally in the city streets. That just speaks to what you said earlier about breaking down the silos and every department working together in collaboration for the best of the city. City EMO with Police Chief McConnell and, I'm going to call him Chief Mamie, as leads, remains in operation and continues to coordinate efforts with our provincial counterparts at the PEOC. The department and its members have carried out their duties with a true sense of dedication and professionalism. Morale has never been and remains high, sorry, morale has been and remains high, and members are excited for the future opportunities to grow and learn from our experiences during this extreme event. So with that, thank you. Thank you very much, and tell all the staff they're amazing. Thank you. On a different note, the department also received news of Chief Randy McDonald's retirement effective on the 14th of October. I would like to advise, the chief, Randy McDonald, has submitted his notice to retire effective October 14th, 2022. Randy started his employment with the town of Parkdale, and at the time of amalgamation in 1995, took on the position of fire inspector. In September of 2009, Randy was appointed fire chief. At the core of Randy's service to the city was his dedication to the safety and security of Charlottetown residents and his promotion of the city fire department. Chief McDonald could be depended upon to support his firefighters, be it in training, equipment, et cetera. He will be missed by his colleagues and all who worked with him and for him, wishing Randy all the best as he and Donna start on their new adventure. Congratulations, chief. And lastly, in a sad note, the department was also advised of the passing of two retired volunteer firefighters, Wendell Tomes and Roger McDonald, during the Fiona period of time. So with that, thank you. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Counsel Duffy?
Yes.
Yours, Mike, is that?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Counsel Reverde, for your report. Counsel Reverde, I didn't get a chance to speak to you before the meeting tonight, but I did have a chance to speak to the acting chief of fire. I don't often, as you know, drag operational issues into the council chamber here. I tend to try to handle them myself in my own ward, but I've got a problem at 62 Highland Avenue, which is the corner of Highland and Amber Street. The gentleman that lives at this home there has been piling junk, wood products, old cars, you name it, it's in there. This is a residential area, by the way, an R1, where people have very nice homes, and they're getting pretty tired, pretty sick and tired of this gentleman and his antics. He's been told by the fire department and Constable Suckler also that he has to clean the place up. He was given every latitude that he possibly could be given to clean the place up. It's getting worse. It's getting worse. He even had, he had maybe a month to clean it up at the bequest of the fire department and the police department, and he was just getting worse all the time. So, and then he had a sickness, so he was given a two-week extension after he returned to get the thing cleaned up. He's adding, he's now scouting the ward, bringing more lumber, more trees and stumps and blockwood and all that back onto, and it's just gotten out of control. So I'm at my wits' end, the neighbors are at their wits' end. Acting chief Mamie assisted one of our fire inspectors, I think it was on Thursday or Friday of last week, to go up and speak to the individual, but it's getting us nowhere. So I regret having to haul it in here, but I need some help, and so do the residents in the area. I spoke to acting chief, and I think he has a bit of a report. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief?
Your Worship, thank you. This one? Yes, Counsel Duffy, thank you. I was up there on Friday with one of our fire inspectors, and we did visit the property. It's a, I guess, it's a corner property, and it has an extension on the back end of it. I guess we're talking about two different instances. Beforehand, before the storm, he had been given a hazard compliance order because of the crates. He was using all of the old crates for wood, so that was addressed, and he had been making a good headway with that after he had been given a period of time to recover from surgery. Unfortunately, between then and now, Fiona hit, and another opportunity for wood did present itself. present itself. We were up there on Friday past just to deal with that aspect of it, and a great amount of that wood was, was cleaned up of that. He had it all around the front of the property and the side, that was all cleaned up all the way. And the fire inspector has written him a hazard compliance order, and we're dealing with that matter as we speak, but it won't be getting out of hand, it'll be getting under, under control here very shortly. It is a work in progress.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Your Worship.
I don't see any other questions. Counsel, Counsel Twill?
I'll start with Chief McConnell. Chief McConnell, I've talked to residents on Queen Street, where you turn up to Royal Court, and an opportunity to speak with some residents that live right there. And two things, Chief, and you can check your records for accidents at this particular, I guess you'd call it interval, or it's not really an intersection, but we have students that will commute from Colonel Gray, I believe Queen Charlotte, down to the fast food outlets, and then they walk back. Two things are at play. One is they're looking for some type of signage and some type of police presence to slow the traffic down. There has been, over the last number of years, a number of accidents. Lady that lives right there, constituent, I'm sorry, the constituent, had, had told me just a short while ago, I said I would bring it to your attention, and down in the John Street area, I had an opportunity to collaborate with some of the residents, concern about drugs and drug usage, usage, down in the park, and then, you know, at, on the street itself. So I wanted to bring those two items to your, to your attention. If we could, and, and another constituent with, you know, look, I went to Colonel Gray, and they're coming out of the parking lot, out on Spring Park Road, and then they make the turn on to Pond Street. There's a concern there from some of the residents as well, in terms of driving habits, good way to put it. So please, if you could have the department look at those particular areas, be greatly appreciated. That's my questions under police. Here from the Chief.
Your Worship, I've made note of those.
Thank you. You have questions for the Fire Chief? Okay. Yeah, no, I don't know.
Chief McConnell, we want to thank you for your help. We received during the storm-
Yes?
... everyone. I want, you know, I appreciate the, the Charlottetown Police Department.
Thank you.
The next question is for our Chief, Tim Mamie.
We often hear about where we're going as, as, as a fire department in terms of personnel. Now, more specifically, has the department ever conducted some type of analysis, cost-benefit analysis is a good way to put it, with respect to volunteers versus full-time firefighters? Has there ever been a cost-benefit analysis? And when you take into consideration, you know, whether we go to a third station and how that, how that's fleshed out, that's my first question. Has, has there ever, ever been a cost, cost-benefit analysis with respect to full-time firefighters versus, or in comparison to volunteer firefighters? And what would be the advantage of, of both?
Counsel, Counsel Twill, in my time with the department, and that's eleven years this year, no, there hasn't been a cost analysis or a cost-benefit conducted in there.
The question is, Counsel, please?
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe, maybe the future counsel could take that under advisement, just to see, again, what the costs are, what the benefits are, what the pros are, what the cons are, as we move forward, you know, I think you said last month, there's, you know, discussions are ongoing, there's the appointment of the arbitrator, but just so, you know, maybe we can look at that down the road and to see, again, what the benefits are, full-time firefighters, volunteer firefighters, and what, where we go as municipal government.
Thanks, Chief. Counsel Ramsey, questions from the floor?
Just a comment for Chief McConnell. Chief McConnell, I don't know if I sent you the email, I sent it to Public Works too, but Waterview, where we put the quieting things there on north of a road out in Waterview, there is people, they're still not allowing people to walk on the trail across the street from, coming from Waterview to go across the street to the trail there with their pets or with their children. And I'm just wondering, is that under Public Works, is that under police, or did we work together with that? Because what we're looking at, this one lady said she liked to see lights, but we already got lights right there at Allen's Creek. Would it be a possibility in the future of sometime putting those flashing lights like we have in Allen Street or something, at least when the traffic's coming, if they, if they hit the button, if they hit the button? Because I drive in Allen Street where they don't hit the button. I mean, they're, they'll see the light flashing, and then all the somebody's trying to cross. Like, we have the crosswalk there, plus we got the, the concrete, so on, but at the same time, they're still finding it hard to cross. Like, in fact, one of our city trucks near the rain are over the other day. So I, I, I just wondered. She asked me to ask that question, and I said I'll ask police and Public Works.
Your Worship, the police services always has a stake in, in safety and the safety of our citizens. This particular traffic calming devices fall under Public Works, we can certainly consult with them to make sure that they're, they're adequately keeping citizens safe and, and will do so.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, well, thank you, Counsel Reverde, for the report. Thank you, Chief Brad McConnell and Chief Tim Mamie. Thank you. Next report is Council Advisory Committee. Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. The Council Advisory Committee did not meet this month. However, if there are any questions, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Bernard, are you ready to give your report? Parks and Recreation, Parks, Recreation and Leisure?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Parks and Recreation Leisure Activity Committee, Your Worship, met on September the 15th, and as everybody knows, a copy of those minutes are in your package. There is no resolution for council consideration tonight, Your Worship, but I do have some updates. Start off with Fiona. Works of Fiona cleanup is all hands on deck. We have all our crews working seven days a week to clean up the city's trails, as well as the parks and playgrounds. So they've been going at it, there's a lot of our department staff have, putting in twelve-hour days and going every day. Currently, the city's portion of the Confederation Trail, Your Worship, is now open, accessible from Joe Gis Park to the Royalty Junction. That is cleared and opened and, and okay to be, to be used by those who like to use it. Staff have just completed the assessments in our parks and are removing the most hazardous trees first. The seven parks that are closed right now will remain closed until deemed safe, when the digits, the dangerous situations are cleared. And, Your Worship, I'm just gonna name off those seven parks again. That's Messier Park, McMillan Park, Upton Park, Knott Square, McPherson Park, J. Muse Park, and McLean Park. So those have some dangerous situations, and they have been assessed, and our staff will be getting into, to remove those dangerous situations. But, you know, the trails, like, anybody can see the amount of trees that are down everywhere. I mean, it's just, it's just unreal. Like, Palat of Carey, you look through there, you see the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, seventy percent of the trees are down. A lot of our trails, there's a lot of trees down, and you have the hanging trees that, so it's very dangerous. It's gonna take some time, and so we will ask for people's patience, but we will get a lot of contractors in and as many crews as we can, but it's going to take time. It's just, it's, it's unreal to see the damage. So, Your Worship, but they are working on it, it has been assessed. Like I say, the Confederation Trail is just about completed, and we'll be also, also doing the parks, try and get them seven, open and have them safe. And, Your Worship, just some, some highlights from the minutes in your package. The West Royalty Sport Outdoor Facility has been completed. The lights are operational during the evenings, and between pickleball and ball hockey and other sports, we're seeing a lot of the community usage, which obviously is very pleased, and I'm sure the council of the area sees it, sees it also. So again, this is the, this is the second one. We have the Gordy Griffin one, now we have this one, and proven to be pretty popular. So you provide a place for them to play, they will come. So, Your Worship, Worship, highlights from a minute include the final concept design for the city's newest district park located in Estrolli in the old Lagoon property. So if people want to go to the last page in their binder, they'll see the final concept design, and when you look at that, on the left-hand upper corner, you'll see the features of the new park, so they're all listed, and they're all numbered, and those numbers are on that map. So if people want to look at, I'll just give you some examples, because I have to say, Your Worship, staff and the consultant who worked on this design did a better job than I expected. It was a real good job, so you're really pleased with the staff on this, really pleased with the consultant. So just to give people an, an idea, if you look, for example, number 12, and now not that page, it's the one just before that, okay, so it's, it's the map that you want to look at. So if you look at number 12, for example, you'll see a pump track for the kids on bikes, and the pump track, Your Worship, is gonna be 800 feet in length. Or if you look at number eight on the map, you'll see a new large playground area for children with a picnic table, picnic area just behind that is number four, and the gazebo is gonna be on the other side of the playground equipped with number 10. Number five will show a walking trail all around the perimeter of the park and up the middle of the park, so there'll be a trail all the way around it, up through the middle, so you can walk whatever distance you want. And number 14, if you follow that trail, shows the trail will continue down to the viewing deck, which will be overlooking Wright's Creek, which is, the view lines are very attractive. So, Your Worship, just, that's just to give you a little idea, I mean, the, the plan is there, and I think there's sixteen or seventeen things that are identified in that, but really good job, and went to a public meeting, and the, and the public was very pleased with what they seen. So just wanted counsel to know, that's the concept drawing, and that they're very pleased with staff and the consultant on that. Thank you, Your Worship. Any questions?
Counsel Yankoff and Counsel Reverde.
Good, thank you. I was just making notes. I had some residents reached out to me, and then I did a check myself through Victoria Park. Is there, is there, is the reason for the washrooms not being open beside the Ball Diamond? Because you're trying to encourage anyone to stay out of the park? Because the park's packed all weekend, but the washrooms have been locked? And I'm just wondering if you could clarify that for me?
Well, I, I don't, I don't have anything to do with when the washrooms are open or closed. Did they call staff to ask that question, do you know?
They called me.
Okay, so maybe, Chris, you have, you have something? They should be open. I'm not sure why that wouldn't be-
Your Worship, the park is still without power, so that is the reason why the washrooms are still closed? And the ball field lights and tennis courts and the tennis clubhouse are all closed because we still don't have power? We are working on getting that resolved, hopefully very soon.
Okay.
Thank you, that's great clarification, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Counsel Reverde?
Thank you, Your Worship. Now that the rink in West Royalty is complete, fully complete, I would like to, again, thank all of council for, for your support on the project. Every time I drive by, it is, it's being used, like, constantly. I don't think I've ever seen it not used, and I'm, I wouldn't be surprised during the hurricane if there wasn't kids on there playing. The one question I do have is around the, the use of helmets. Is there, I don't know if there's any signage there now, or if we can put signage there, it's gonna be hard to monitor, but I certainly like to encourage the children on rollerblades and stuff to be, to be wearing helmets if possible, because, again, a fall can be pretty critical, but if that, if that's possible, can we get that?
Yeah, and I, that's, that's a good point, and we usually do poke some signs up, you know, and you're probably talking roller, playing roller hockey, are they? So, yes, they probably should, and then for, for the ice season this year. So, yeah, staff will, Chris will take note, and we'll get those signs up. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard, King Square, it's not closed? It's, all the trees are down? Like, it's pretty devastating down there.
Your Worship, the parks that, that Counsel Bernard listed were the parks that have playgrounds in them, the other parks that have, like, the four squares, those are all closed as well, too, because of the-
The damage. And the damage in Victoria Park, quite extensive, Chris?
The damage in Victoria Park is quite extensive. Staff have been in there, and there is now signage erected to let people know that it is a hazard to be in there and to ask them to stay out of the trails, because majority of the trails have all been covered over with fallen trees.
And I think I'll add, Your Worship, not just the trails through Victoria Park, it's most of our tree, tree area, the trails will be closed-
Yeah.
-until we can get them safe.
And just one last question, Counsel Bernard. I was out into Royalty Oaks Windsor Park off Royalty Road. There is a playground down there, and green space. They have a design that was submitted by the, I believe, the neighborhood, maybe ten years ago. Could we bring that back and take a look at it? They were wondering where it's at. It's the, the, as I said, Windsor Park, that's the-
Designed for what?
There was a design for the park to plant trees, to provide trails through, I think it's Ward Eight, it's off Essex, and the resident that lives right bordering onto it showed me the design, and I do have a copy, but our department must have a design on file, just to take that back out. Do you know what I'm talking about there, Deputy? There is one. Hmm? It's, I, I can forward it to Chris, Christopher. Okay, Christopher?
Thank you.
And he'll forward copies to all of us. Thank you. Any questions for the Chair of, Kate? Counsel, Counsel Twill?
I want to take this opportunity to congratulate George Hollywell for collecting hockey equipment to be dispersed to anyone that doesn't have hockey equipment. George has been doing this for a number of years, and some of his associates, collaboration with Charlottetown Minor Hockey, and I think there should be a point in time where we reach out to George and honor George for his contribution. George grew up in the same neighborhood that I did, and is a special place in his heart for underprivileged kids who don't have access to hockey equipment due to the expense of hockey equipment. Hockey equipment's very expensive, so I think we should be honoring George Hollywell someday in the not-too-distant future. He truly is a leader, and without people like George Hollywell in our community, a lot of kids wouldn't have the opportunity to participate in some of these expensive sports like hockey, being the cost of skates, gloves, hockey equipment. So I just want to personally and publicly thank George Hollywell.
Thank you, Counsel Twill, recognizing another leader in the community. Thank you. Okay, we can move on. Public Works, I think that, oh, water and sewer, sorry. I don't-
I'm used to it, no problem. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee did not meet, our meeting was canceled due to, due to Fiona, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, just like everybody else, all city workers, staff, management, everyone that pulled together through Fiona. I, I especially like to thank, I'm a little biased, the Water and Sewer Utility Workers that worked through the storm. You know, I, I know people on PEI, a lot of us lost power for, for weeks on end, but I must say, the city of Charlottetown did not lose Water and Sewer facilities. I mean, our, our workers worked through, kept it all going for us, you know, even though the showers were cold, it was nice to freshen up and wake up and be able to use the washroom, and, you know, they worked hard for that. And I think, you know, I'll go back to this council and other councils, that, you know, we, we've put our resources into the infrastructure of the Water and Sewer Department, reluctantly sometimes, Richard, but we did do it, we, we put money in place, and I think we really benefited this, this storm, you know, because of the infrastructure, the planning, the management of it all, and, and council's ability to, to find resources for, for this department, you know? It, it certainly benefited all of the city.
It certainly benefited all of the city, especially the last couple of weeks. I would also like to thank a lot of the residents. You know, I'm sure all councilors here, we received numerous calls, you know, what do I do? Can you call Maritime Electric? And, you know, we can't. But, you know, in times of distress, you know, they were very cordial to me. And when I met with them and tried to explain why you can't get your car out of the driveway because the tree is over it, you know, I think a lot of times the residents just want to talk to somebody and vent their frustration. And, you know, I'd like to say thank you, you know. I'd say all of the residents that I've talked to, on the street or on the phone, were very cordial. They were very upset, you know, we're in new territory now. They didn't know what to do, and they just reached out to somebody. So I, you know, a big response to them, and a thank you to them, and to all the workers. We don't have any resolutions tonight, but if anybody'd like to have any questions regarding Water and Sewer, the floor is open for questions as always, and I appreciate anybody asking. Thank you.
Any questions for the Chair of Standing Committee for Water and Wastewater? Counselor Twill?
Thank you for your, uh, your comments, Chair of Water and Sewer, Chairman Bob. Question for our manager, and before that, I do want to thank you, sir, and the Water and Sewer Department. One of the services that maintained that continuity throughout the storm was our Water and Sewer Services. So I want to thank you. You know, having access to water was, that's the last thing we needed, not having access to water, good drinking water. So congratulations on that. As you know, Richard, I've talked about, uh, the infrastructure on Queen Street and the flooding that continues to take place. There was flooding, and I will talk under Public Works as well. There is flooding down in Queen Street anytime we have a rain event. And, and the reason why I stand here tonight is that whenever there's a rain event, there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of anxiety, intimidation, apprehension as to what that means to that neighborhood down on Queen Street, the flooding that takes place. From Queen Street, say Douglas, from Douglas, Costello Lane, including Reserve Street, Connolly Street, that's just a swamp, and then it continues up to Pond Street. I really believe that the time has come that we make an investment in infrastructure to be able to handle, uh, proper infrastructure, to be able to handle, uh, these types of rain events, weather events. They're not going away. We're going to experience more and more of them. So I wanted to bring that to your attention once again, to reiterate that one more time. Uh, I'm not sure if it's in the plans of Water and Sewer to be taking on the responsibility eventually, uh, for, for, for stormwater. Not sure if that's in, you know, a five-year plan. But we're going to have to be as innovative and creative as we possibly can, because the residents are, anytime an event takes place, the residents are petrified, and need your help in solving that dilemma. So I wanted to, once again, reiterate just how troublesome that is for the people living in that community.
Okay. You got that, Mr. McKeehan? Or did you want to respond?
I really don't.
Okay. Mr. McKeehan, or Mr., the Chair of Water and Wastewater, Vince Mulliken of Ward Four said that if anything, I had my water, I could flush my toilet, and it was great that I'm living in this city. So thanks for keeping it going there, Richard. He said, did you get a response? What's your response, Mr.? Mr. McKeehan? For Counselor Twill's?
Yes, I mean, we are aware of the situation, working with Public Works on plans. It is very challenging. The area is at a low elevation, and when the sea level is high, there is no place for water to go, but we are working and trying to develop plans.
Thank you, Mr. McKeehan. Okay, Counselor Dron, that's all for the report.
That concludes it. Thank you very much.
concludes the report. And now we go to Counselor Duffy, Vice Chair of the Public Works Beautification Standing Committee, with Mr., our Chief Engineer, Scott Adams.
Thank you, your worship. Public Works and Urban Beautification Committee met on September the 22nd, 2022, with draft minutes included in the regular monthly council package. The Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities met on September the 8th, 2022, with draft minutes included in the regular monthly council package. There is one light resolution for the consideration of council tonight. I've been left a short report. Where'd you go? Okay. He didn't ask me. I have a short report that's been left with me by Counselor McLeod, which I read. It concerns the activities of the Public Works Committee, or Public Works Staff during the Fiona activities. Um, since the onset of city, since the onset, city staff and contractors have been working 12- to 14-hour days, seven days a week, opening roads up, clearing up the city. The Public Works Department is committed to continue to work at this pace to ensure the city is ready for the arrival of winter. As of today, we have nine crews who are continuing to work to clear hazardous trees and clear debris from all city streets, which includes five city crews and four contract crews. Currently, Park Street parking lot has been used as a temporary dump site to store tree debris from the storm. The city and the province are working together with a private contractor on a plan to chip the trees into smaller pieces and haul them away to be used for fuel if feasible. This work could start as soon as early next week. Our sidewalk repair crews are surveying sidewalk damage and working to develop a repair plan to fix these locations before the winter season. Some staff, uh, some staff, some staff has slowly transitioned back to the regular duties, as there are many tasks to complete as part of our annual preparation for winter. I think there's a word missing there, I don't know. Anyway, the Public Works Management Team would like to thank the various contractors, organizations, businesses, and city residents that have helped us and our staff in various ways to get our city cleaned up. However, more importantly, we want to thank our staff for their hard work and commitment to cleaning up this city. We are very grateful for the team that we have at Public Works. This work has been hard and exhausting, but our staff return to work each morning, ready to put in another long day's worth of work. It is a pleasure working with this team, and we can't thank them enough for all the work they have, have and continue to do to clean up our beautiful city. With that, I thank Mr. Adams for this note, and I will now turn it over. Anybody who wants to ask any questions, which I will direct to Mr. Adams.
Counselor Duffy? Counselor Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you for that report, Counselor Duffy. I'm going over your notes, the Public Works Urban Beautification Notes of September 22nd, 2022. And, you know, I'm looking at the, um, the resolution to award snow removal. Um, in, in the notes, it says, it is the Public Works Committee recommendation to approve the attached resolution and forward to the Finance Committee for their approval. Now, part of the new business is I want to address the email that we've received. And, you know, we've always gone from Public Works or our committee, and it goes to Finance for approval. And I noticed that this one didn't go to Finance for approval. It also, you know, I was quite, I was quite shocked, because this is a, this is a very important, uh, resolution. I mean, we're looking at $3,502 a kilometer, which is $89,301 a year, which is $446,505 for a five-year contract. You know, it's a half a million dollars over five years. And in, in these notes, it said because the proposal, um, it was scored, just I want to use the words, that it was a very well-written proposal. So I know we have it, you know, 50 points for price, 50 points for proposal, but when you look at the document, um, you know, it's pretty vague. You know, we, the province is not plowing the city streets this year. There's 25.5 kilometers. And, you know, the proposal was vague. So I'm thinking, you know, it's not like other proposals that you have to have a very defined, like a fire hall. It's a lot of in-depth stuff. This proposal would, would seem to me that it's plowing snow, you know. The lower bid person, you know, they all really, you know, plow snow very well. I'm just wondering, this, this half-million-dollar contract, you know, in the notes, it also said that the committee were going to receive the scoring notes. This wasn't given to us, um, the rest of council, to see why you come up with this reason of awarding this tender for, you know, for a half a million dollars. I just, you know, we all have to try to keep the payments down, but we have to follow policy and procedure. I do understand that. But can you help explain some of this to me, please?
Can you turn on your bike, Mike, Counselor?
I'll explain a little bit of it, and then I-
Counselor, could we wait for the resolution? That, there is a resolution coming.
Sure.
There's a resolution coming. Counsel, now hold just one second. Counselor Twill, Counselor Revert, and then Counselor McCabe. Are you there, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you for your report. Counselor Duffy, prior to the, uh, prior to the storm, which included a lot of rain, winds, and everything else that went with it, I sent an email into senior administration requesting, like I always do, requesting the barricades be put up down on Queen Street, which would prevent the vehicle traffic from driving through Queen Street. Again, primarily from, let's say, Douglas to Pond, uh, because whenever we have a rain event of that magnitude, the water is up at this high or even higher. And some of the vehicle traffic take liberty with driving through and creating these unnecessary waves. Now, my request was quite simple. Just have the barricades there and put them up, and make sure the catch basins are clean and clear. Obviously, that did not happen. I was extremely disappointed. To my mind, it's inexcusable, unacceptable. It's not a, it's not a unreasonable request to have the barricades put up. So I'm not even sure if you're aware of this. You wouldn't be. It's an operational matter. So, so, Mr. Manager, you did get my email. I know the C A O got it. I think I tagged everyone here in City Hall. I don't know why the barricades weren't put up. Uh, you know, the residents in this community are walking on eggshells every time we have a rain event that takes place. The water rises extremely high and very fast. So I don't know why we didn't instruct the staff to put up the barricades, but the barricades should have been put up. So we have residents standing there trying to clear out the catch basins, and the big trucks going, these big four-by-fours, I was watching them, just plowing through, and the waves of water is right into people's properties. And some of these people have finished basements. And then, you know, the same old thing happens over and over and over again. I don't know why, for the life of me, we can't have the barricades put up. The residents and myself will put the barricades up, we'll do the work. We just want the barricades. So to not have the barricades there, to my mind, is totally unacceptable. That's an operational matter. It should have been addressed and addressed effectively. And, uh, C A O, I want you to look into this, and I want you to find out why that request wasn't fulfilled. There's got to be a thousand emails here at City Hall regarding putting up the barricades over the last number of years, putting those barricades up. Sometimes they're up, sometimes they're not up. It's a hit and miss. That's a management thing, nothing to do with the workers. The workers are doing a great job, and they did a great job during Fiona. But this goes on time and time again, and it's very, very frustrating, Miss C A O.
Thank you. Counselor Duffy, do you want to respond to it, or do you want to defer to the manager?
What about Counselor Dron here? You want to respond to him first?
We're going to-
Okay. So I think Counselor Twill has got his, has requested the C A O to follow up with that issue, I think. Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Revert?
There we go. Thank you, your worship. I feel terrible asking any questions of Public Works after, after what your department is doing during this last couple of weeks. So again, please let your staff know they're doing a great job. I know a lot of sleepless nights for a lot of these folks, and they're pretty tired, and they're away from their families. So a big thank you to the staff. I do have to touch on Beach Grove Road. The culvert replacement, because I have, in my eight years on council, have not received even close to as many calls I'm getting with regards to traffic leaving onto May Point Road. Thank you for having someone out there to, to help coordinate the flow of traffic. I'm told that the person's not there anymore, and I'm just wondering if you can look into that, because it was helpful, it did limit the calls. I think there was better flow. If we can have someone back there during peak hours, that would be amazing again. And the other question I get, and I have witnessed this, even prior to Fiona, there was many days where, of course, the culvert was, or was blocked off the road, no access, and no work happening. That would, that sent some of the residents kind of, you know, over the, over the ledge, and rightfully so, because I said, you know, we're shutting this down. It's inconvenience, it has to happen. But when there's no work happening there, it perpetuates the anger. So I don't know if you can kind of elaborate on that piece, but it would be great if you could.
Now, your worship, so first, first, or first part, we appreciate the comments. Our staff have been just working tirelessly, and it's been phenomenal. The morale's still up, which is fantastic. And, but they do appreciate hearing the positive feedback, so thank you. And we will make sure they can hear that. In regards to the May Point Roundabout, the reason why we haven't gotten someone there back yet is just we are strained for staff right now. Our primary focus is getting the streets cleaned up and providing traffic control for those crews right now, because there's a lot of, a lot of downed trees. And when we have all the big equipment on the street, some of the streets are hard to see around, and we need traffic control staff there. We're trying to, hopefully, next week, we'll have someone back there for the morning rush hour to help that. But again, it's depending on how our cleanup's going and how strained we are on staff. There's no contractor staff out there that's available at the moment. Everyone's tied up. So it's just right now, because of Fiona, it's very hard to get flagging staff. So we are working on it. We are aware that there was positive feedback from that, and we want to get someone back out there to help, and we will as soon as we can free up the staff for that one. And regards to the Beach Grove Road project, it, some of the, I can understand where some of the frustration is. The challenge is, we have very little area to set up, equipment and all that stuff. So equipment had to come in a certain day just to deal with, they have to have various pieces of equipment, because there's some work up on Forest Drive to be done, and we had nowhere for site storage. Then, you know, there was about a week where probably wasn't a lot of activity. They started doing some activity. We got everything dug out. Now we're up on Forest Drive, putting what we call P R V, or Pressure Relief Valve Chamber, and we expect that work to finish up this week, and they're back down Beach Grove Road, and we should start seeing some sections come in sometime next week. So a lot of activity will start to really ramp up there once we get the work on Forest Drive done. And that's, that's for water for the area. So we understand, it was a challenging project, and, you know, we looked at various options, and in hindsight, we, you know, maybe we could have tried to delay them an extra week of closing it down. It's really challenging when you're, when you're working with contractors, and they can only get equipment here in certain times, because trucking industry's so busy as well. So that's also a big challenge. So it is challenging, and we appreciate everyone's patience. We can understand the frustration with the delays getting out of the neighborhood. But it's really, it's a logistical challenge for contractors to get equipment here and such. So there are a number of challenges, and- So there are a number of challenges, and in hindsight, we'll definitely, in future, as we'll look at other, other options to reduce the schedule and all that stuff.
Just one follow-up. Straight question. I don't know if I want the answer. I don't know if I want the answer or not. Are we still on target to complete as the additional plan?
So we're probably a, a week delayed, just because of Fiona, but no, we're still on target to finish this year. Sometime in November, we should be wrapped up and out of there. So again, once you start seeing those sections come on site, you'll start to see the work take place, or take shape very quickly.
Counselor McCabe?
For the resolution, because I'm piggybacking off Counselor Dron.
Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, Counselor Duffy, for your report, and Scott. Scott, I brought up the police earlier, and I sent you the email about the North of Road and Waterview, and I was just wondering, maybe in the next little while, the police and Public Works and myself can have a look at that intersection, and we'll sit down and just see what the answer is. Thank you.
Okay. One more question there, Counselor Twill?
The question is, the timeline and timeframe, when the project on Harley Street will be completed? That's my first question.
So, Your Worship, so we're still waiting to get the final, or final schedule. The big delay was the asphalt plant reopening here. Island Destruction Company has been very busy aiding our city in doing a lot of tree removal. They just fired up the asphalt plant, I believe, yesterday again, or today. So their asphalt crews are starting to mobilize again. And so, once they know when they're getting there, we'll be able to have a final schedule put in place for, for that work. So again, they're just getting mobilized this week, and that's the bulk of the work. It remains, another lift of asphalt to go down, and then some final cleanup.
Counselor Twill, final question, and then we'll go on to the, we'll go on to the resolutions.
Okay. With respect to the traffic calming measure on Harley Street, as you know, and some of the correspondence, there is mixed reaction. Is there, is there a timeframe in terms of an evaluation after four, or five, or six months as with respect to the, to the traffic calming measures? If it's not as effective as, as what we envisioned, what are the possibilities of removing it?
So, Your Worship, so again, yes, you're correct. So it's something we will evaluate over the next year. We'll take snapshots of time and evaluate how the effectiveness or ineffectiveness, which we don't expect is going to happen. But it is designed for easy removal and just put back asphalt. That's how we design it, in the event that it had to be removed. So again, we'll, we'll monitor it for the next year and evaluate its effectiveness.
And Mr. Adams, I want to also thank you for all the work the staff have been doing over the last two weeks plus. Great work, great morale, as you said. And again, to follow up with Counselor Revert, I'm receiving those calls about hour waits to get up, to get on to Beach Grove Road, up to May Point Road, and then on to the Roundabout. That traffic from Cornwall is just holding everything up, so the quicker we can get the flaggers back there, it'll ease, ease up the, the pressure on motors trying to get out. Resolution, Donna?
Move by Counselor Kevin Ramsey and second by Counselor Mike Duffy. That is per the conditions of the request for quotations for snow removal services. The submission of Chapin Brothers Construction Limited in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars per kilometer of roadway, plus all applicable taxes, be accepted.
Counselor Dron, do you want to just finish what you were saying?
Well, thank you, yeah. Like, the part of the process I was, I was worried about is it came from this committee to send it to finance, and, you know, that was on September twenty-second, and then we received the, an email that on October fifth, which is almost two weeks later, that we're not doing this anymore. You know, I, I think, you know, it was a shock. I was wondering, well, why, why not? We've always done it this way. It goes to finance for approval. They look it over, determine what, what is good and bad and other, and, and then they come back to council. You know, with this new initiative of just coming from the Public Works Committee to council, I feel that it doesn't get the thoroughness of finance to look at it. So that, that was a concern, and, and that's why, you know, under New Business, I wanted to discuss that. You know, again, I'm the first one, policy and procedure. When, you know, you get a tender out and you go with the best one, I'm just wondering about the process. I didn't get to see the notes from that committee. Maybe there was something that I, you know, I'm, I'm not able to see, or, or why the three staff determined the highest tender would be the best. You know, again, I'm, I refer to, you know, it's plowing snow. It's not, you know, building a firehouse or, or anything like that. So those were the questions that I, I asked previously, and if you could help me with that, Counselor Duffy, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, actually, it was at finance. This issue was at finance. It was forwarded to finance by Public Works. Public Works, as we know, as members of finance, we discussed it, and, and it was the suggestion of the Finance Department to send it back to Public Works, who in turn would send it to council, and that's why it's here tonight. So touch base with, with finance. Other than that, I can tell you that this particular sort of issue that we're dealing with, it's one that is, it should be addressed by a request for proposals, because a request, you keep referring to a tender, it's not a tender. A tender is when you're, you're just looking for a, a good price for an article, and everybody knows what are the components of that article. This is more of a, this is new to us, this, whatever kilometers there is, and it's, the price is only one part of the request for, for a proposal. We're asking the companies that do this sort of work, are you interested in doing this work? If you are, tell us how you would go about doing the work, because we have never done this stretch of road before. So we, we know where we want to be at the end of the day, and we know where we are now. We want you, Mr. Company, to tell us how you're going to do, do that for us. So that's when it, when the equipment comes in, the training of your staff comes in, the knowledge of your staff comes in, a lot more factors than just starkly price standing alone. But with that, Your Worship, I'll, I'll pass it over to Mr. Adams for further explanations.
Mr. Adams?
Your Worship, so Counselor Duffy explained it quite well. When we get a, a proposal like this, yes, we're, we do put some parameters on, you know, what our end goal is for the, for the contractor to achieve. The goal of the proposal is for them to tell us how they're going to achieve those goals. And that's, that's very important, because that in turn forms part of the final contract that we'll enter in with this contractor. So contractor tells us, you know, they're going to exceed our standards by a certain number, that, you know, that in turn, if they are awarded, then that in turn becomes part of the contract, and they'll exceed our, our standards. So when, again, when we're, when we're, proposals are reviewed, we have to look at them from standpoint that we don't know these contractors, because there could be a new contractor that applies, you know? And so we have to base their decision and our scores based on what is written in black and white paper in front of us. You know, because, just because we know the contractor and have dealt with them in another aspect, doesn't mean, you know, we can't use our opinion on it. We have, it has to be based on what is written in black and white. And so that's the challenge, or when you score these things, we have to be very fair in terms of, you know, we put a scoring matrix, we tell them how we're going to score in the document, and that's what we score to at, at the end of the day, and then, excuse me, and end up with the scores that we did.
Counselor McCabe? All right. To come out, thank you. And thank you for explaining that a little bit, Scott. I guess for me, when I read the report, and, and maybe it's on me a little bit, but when I read that, it really wasn't clear, when Counselor Dron brought up to me just a little what, when he made it public that there would be a four hundred and forty-six thousand dollar difference over five years. First of all, nowhere does it say that this is a five-year contract, or I could find it, maybe I missed it, in, in the report. So when I read this, I wouldn't have known that it was going to be over five years. The second thing, you know, I look at your point score, and I appreciate interviews, I appreciate when we're looking for what you're looking for, but I don't see your score difference. So for me, I see six points, and I see a total of four hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and five dollars over five years, which is a lot of money for taxpayers. And not that pushing snow isn't, it's probably one of our most important things we have to do, but I guess for me, is what or why am I going to support four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars more? What sets this company apart for me? And I, I don't want to defer this, because I know snow's coming, but I'm really struggling to support four hundred and forty-six thousand dollar difference over five years at this point.
Counselor Ramsey, did you want to?
No, I never said we. Did you wish to answer that?
Counselor Duffy, do you want him to answer that?
Mr. Adams?
I can try to answer.
First of all, it's only one year we should be speaking of this. Trying to make it a lot more than it really is. It's ninety, ninety thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but it's a five-year contract. Yeah, go ahead there, Counselor. Counselor McCabe has asked the question.
So, yeah, the scoring and the price difference is, when, at the end of the day, when you add them together, there's only six points difference, plus because there was a bit, there was a difference in price. And so some of the things we look at, again, is the staff, where, and I believe I can share the notes with councils afterwards, if you, if you wish. You know, some of the staff, we want to look at their experience levels, and one contractor was only, you know, looking at about two years' experience for each driver. The other contractor was saying their drivers had between five and fifteen years of experience of driving. We also look at the age of equipment and their plan for replacement. One contractor said they were going to start out with twenty fifteen trucks, and the replacement plan was they would evaluate yearly on what the condition of the trucks are and replacement necessary. Another contractor said, our trucks are twenty twenty-one, practically brand-new. The average age of the equipment starting out would be no more than three years, and then over the five-year term, the average age would increase to about five years. And then there's also, they talk about, you know, we, we want to see them talk about, you know, their, how they're going to get ready for storms, how they're going to attack storms. And again, the company that we recommended put in their proposal, you know, they, they have separated, you know, how they're going to attack, how they're going to approach storms, whether it's zero to ten seconds, ten to twenty, and twenty and above, where the other contractor didn't really touch on how they're going to, you know, approach different sizes of storms. So again, there's a lot of detail in it, in, in some reports, and again, especially in the proposal that we have scored high on, on the spec side, they put a lot of detail on how they're going to approach the contract, how they're going to achieve the goals of the contract, where the other three proponents didn't put that much detail. And so it's really hard to score them when they don't put that detail. That's, those are the pieces of the puzzle that we need to see. How are, what, what is your game plan for approaching a storm? What is your game plan for your equipment and your staff, and, and how you're going to attack this, this work? Without them put in the paper, how do we score it? And that, that's the challenge. So we, we score everything based on the written part first, and then the pricing gets looked after second.
Exactly. Someone has to turn off the mic. Counselor McCabe?
Well, I think moving forward, I would rather see more clear information in a report, because, yeah, for me, when I don't sit on Public Works, I didn't pick up on some of that stuff. Thank you.
So I have, Counselor Ramsey, did you have your hand up on this, or no? Okay. So Counselor Bernard, Revert, and then Dron.
Thank you, Worship. This is the roads that the province used to look after, right? This is the main routes. So these, these, one, they require extra care. They've got to go down these a lot more frequently than they do any side roads. These are the main routes, and these are the, for emergency vehicles and everything else. So this, this is important. And I think I remember with White One, we had a contractor, and we used to take the lowest tender and couldn't do it. And we had wheels falling off plows, plows falling off, and I seen it myself. So council the day decided, you know what? We're going to strengthen the snow clearing operations. We're going to go with a point system, scoring system. Sometimes lowest, lowest bid to get to pay for. So I think we asked staff to do this, they did a scoring, and now we're questioning it. And now I'm hearing tonight, well, we want to save all this money. But two people that stood up to want to save the money turned down Enterprise Fleet, and we're up two hundred sixty-one thousand, it's one point eight million dollars guaranteed over one, the next ten years. And we were told the vehicles aren't, aren't even being prepared yet, but you know what? They're all in. They all arrived, and it wasn't going to be local, went through local. So it, I, I'm kind of, you know, talking about confused. We, we do a tender process, that we can get the best results, then we talk about saving money, but depending who it is, we, you know, we're not interested in saving money. So tonight, we're saving money. Last month, we weren't. So, you know what? I, I trust the staff to do this, this here proposal the way they did. It went through the Public Works Committee, I understand. It went through the Finance Committee. So this is the recommendation. I'm okay with it.
Counselor Revert, and Counselor Dron, and Counselor McCabe for a second question.
Yeah, thank you, Worship. I just, I guess I'll kind of echo what Counselor Bernard is saying. We need, we need to be a little bit careful here on, on how we deal with these tenders and, and how we dismiss, or can easily dismiss staff's recommendations. I mean, we, we went through with the Fire Hall. We saw how that, we saw how, result of that, we can't talk about it, but we, we know the results. You know, we talked about, we talked about years of service, for instance. Counselor Dron, I think you brought it up. I mean, we just went through pest control, horse, rodent, skunk removal, and the company that did it for fifteen years, they were shoved off to the side for a company that, that hasn't been here. So again, we, we got to be careful on how we pick and choose and what we want to pick and choose. Staff has clearly indicated, and the committee has recommended, that someone get the tender based on the scoring system, which is fair. To start questioning that because of phone calls made to counselors by a contractor, I just be careful.
Counselor Dron?
Point of order here, Worship. What, a, a phone call was made to a counselor?
Did you, did you receive one? Did you, did you, Counselor Dron?
I never received anything.
No? Okay. Counselor Dron, just go on then.
Clarification, though, be nice, right? So now we're talking about cars and skunks and everything else. Alls we wanted to know was a little bit more information. We didn't have access. In the notes, it said the committee members were going to give, be given the notes of the scoring, but we, we don't have this. So you're just sitting here wondering what happened, why, you know? And, and then we get the email, like I say, that under New Business, I didn't know this went to finance. I wasn't a hundred percent sure. So I, I do not know how it was scored. You know, I would think that, you know, you're looking for plowing, you know, you ask a contractor, you know, for, for plows. And then in the notes, it says, well, the other contractor gave a lot better proposal. Well, what's better? You know, you say, okay, you ask for information of how we're plowing, we give it to you. And then you go with the other one that has a, a better one. Well, we're going to plow it with a red light on the roof. Like, we don't have the information. You know, you're just sitting here wondering, how does this happen? It's a half a million dollar contract. The point system, to me, you know, we're looking at six points, or, you know, the second person had fifty out of fifty on price, you still give thirty-eight for the other one. And then you go back to the proposal, one gets thirty-one, forty-nine. Like, I don't know. I wasn't in the room, I'm not the scorer, so I, I'm, I'm just sitting here asking questions. How does this happen? You know, you've, you've obviously told me how it happens, but I, I don't have the information, and that's frustrating. So, you know, again, that's, that's all I wanted, was how it came about this way. And this company, you say, well, we're in business. You know, the second company, I think both companies are in business for a lot of years, but I think, you know, the second or, or third one, they, they've been in business, you know, seventy years, sixty years. I, I'm not sure about the top one. You know, they, they do good work as well. I'm not, I'm not saying they don't do good work. I'm just, you know, there's a lot of things that I don't have the information on.
Well, the low, the low bidder plows three hundred kilometers for the province.
Well, exactly. Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, for a point of clarification, I also didn't receive any phone calls. I just want to make it clear that it wouldn't be the first time I was misled in these chambers, so I'm trying to make sure I have all the information when I'm making a decision, which I don't feel I have, which I don't feel that the report provided for me, which I agree with Counselor Dron. If we're going to get the information and you want me to support something moving forward based on my past experience, I want to see what I'm voting on. I haven't seen that. I'm sorry, Scott, but I won't be supporting the resolution tonight.
Counselor Duffy, did you want to respond for both?
Sure.
And then Counselor Yankoff?
As members of the city council, all you should be worried about is the results of the, of the calculation of, that we have. I mean, like, that, that's, it's a point system, and one group got six points more than the other group. You don't have, you don't have to know, we have our staff here that are trained You don't have, you don't have to know, we have our staff here that are trained in this area. You don't have to know the mythology that was used to get to where we are or why the thing set up it was. You have to trust our staff who are trained in this area. So who won? Well, the one with the six more, six points. Like, does council have to get involved in everything we calculate or everything we examine or everything we analyze? Or can you not trust the staff that work for us? Thank you, worship.
Counsel Yankoff.
Thank you, worship. I'm thinking that this all could have been avoided if the information that we received as committee members was circulated to all of council or put into the report for everyone to have read over the weekend. Because even when you read the resolution, it doesn't indicate that it's 25.5 kilometers so that you would do the math that it would come out to, the amount of money. It just says it's 17,800 per kilometer. It doesn't say that. So I can understand why there's confusion. So maybe we just want to defer till our next special meeting of council and send out all that information to everybody else. I know it's time, I know it's time-consuming, but maybe that note to self, we should have sent it all out then. I mean, I got the information, so I can support staff's recommendation, but I understand that others didn't get it. And note of clarity, nobody called me either.
Good. No calls?
No calls.
So, Mr., Mr. Adams, can you explain the situation that we're in on deferring it?
Again, if we defer much longer than this, the risk is not having a contractor ready for, prepared for November 1st.
That's the problem.
And I do apologize that scoring was not shared. It's been a very, very busy few weeks. And if, in the future, if anything does come up and you guys do have questions, please call me directly if you don't have the information. I'd be more than happy to share it, and sometimes it's a nice reminder, right? Should send that if I can get a second. So I do apologize for that, just because of the, how busy we have been over the past few weeks.
Question? Counsel Twill?
Yeah. I too, like the majority of members of the city council, look, look at the resolution, and the resolution is not crystal clear as to what you're really voting on in terms of, you know, what the expenditure actually is, how much per year and what is the total amount over a five-year period, which is approximately $500,000. Now, I'm not privy to the methodology of the scoring either. I don't profess to be an expert when it comes to doing the scoring, but if you look at the firms that did apply, and the firm with the lowest score, been around for, what, 70 years? Provided services this city and this province for a 70-year period? Paving, snow removal, certainly not a fly-by-nighter to my mind. And Counsel Bernard, you talked about, you know, Enterprise PEI.
No, Enterprise Fleet Management. Enterprise Fleet Management.
Enterprise Fleet Management. At least, at least this went to an open tender. That didn't happen with, with.
I know, you don't understand.
No.
Keep going.
No, you're right, I don't understand. And neither does a lot of people in this city. Okay. So, so with all due respect, I mean, again, I'll refer to our CAO. I mean, how do you vote on a resolution that doesn't give you the information? It really doesn't. It says per kilometer. I mean, really and truly, I mean, what should be in the resolution, it should be a resolution where we can make an informed decision. That means over $90,000 a year over a five-year period, that's what should be in the resolution, with all due respect. So, you know, we're talking big dollars here, half a million dollars that we put in, put in the street paving and put in other, other services and other operational, other operational method set that this city requires. So, I don't know, I'm at a loss as to, you know, how we arrive at these decisions and recommendations that are made to council. I don't understand what's happening in Public Works. I wasn't afforded the opportunity to attend the Public Works meeting. I know you were there, Counsel Bernard, so.
For another issue, yeah.
Pardon me?
For another issue.
I know, but nonetheless, you were there. So, so, anyway.
Is there another second question there?
Yeah. First of all, to say that I was there, I was there not allowed to speak on any other issues besides the one I was there for. So, yeah, I was there. But could I speak on this? No. Did I hear the conversation? Yep. But I was there for another issue. So, did anybody call me? No, nobody called me. It's just common sense. You have, you have a resolution here. I mean, price is one part of the decision-making or scoring. Price is one part of it. And every, you know, we're concentrated on pricing. When this, when this was changed years ago, it was to get the best product, but it was overall, it was also quality, it was not only price, but it was quality, service, and what they were, what they were preparing to offer. And the city had a better idea of what they were getting. So price becomes one factor. And I mean, so, would have been nice to have the scoring. Well, I guess some people are saying that, and they could probably still get it, but I mean, the staff, it's an operation, we've asked staff to do this in this way, the scoring system. So they've got, they've got the information, they've got the proposals. Some are scored better than others because some obviously put the information together properly or have better equipment or whatever. So I mean, he gave an example of the ages of equipment. When we switched over years ago, we made sure the plows were going to be changed out every five years to make sure we weren't having plows breaking down and everything else. So I assume that's still a policy in place? I don't know. But these are the main routes, these are not just side streets. These are the main routes that got to be kept open all the time. Drifting snow and everything else, they got to be going all the time. So I didn't see the proposal, or I didn't, you know, read it, but I'm assuming that they're in the know, so they look at the best proposal for the city of Charlestown, whoever has the best equipment, best drivers, and then it's scored, and that's how the scoring come out. All these guys that I see on this list, they can all plow. They all have equipment to plow, and they all do. We're asking staff to tell us which one's the best proposal for the city of Charlestown. That's what they've done. And now you notice in council here, every time you start to come in now, it's starting to be questioned. So either you go back, well, maybe, maybe, you know, what's, but pricing is only one part. Unless you want to go back to the olden days, we just, pricing is it. Just go with the lowest bidder and that's it. Just slide the seat of your pants. Or you can trust council and go through this scoring process to try and get the best product for the city of Charlestown.
Worship, we have, we have a resolution on the floor. Could we vote on it?
Yep.
If they don't like, if they don't like what's going on, you can vote against it. If you like what's going on, vote for it. That's it.
Counsel.
So Counsel Twill has a second opportunity to speak, and then Counsel Yankoff, and that's it. Go ahead. Your second time.
Thank you. You know, Counsel Bernard, you referred years ago to a particular contractor didn't, wasn't able to provide the service or wasn't effective in terms of snow removal, if I understand that correctly. Pardon me? Oh, okay, okay, okay. Great, great, okay. But the contractor that submitted the low, pardon me? Thank you, thank you. So do we have any reason? Can anybody in this chamber tell me, do we have any reason for city council not to go with the lowest bid? Okay? We're talking credibility, we're talking reliability, and we're talking reputation. Okay? A firm, construction firm, that's been in this province providing service for 70 years, do we have any reason not to go with the lowest score in terms of credibility and reliability? Would somebody please answer that question?
Yes, your worship, we, as a council.
Vote hard.
Formulated the request for proposals.
Yep.
And that's part of the deal. As, and been told 15 times tonight, price is only one small part of the calculation.
Counsel Yankoff. Final point.
Thank you. And my final comment on this, I am, I am prepared to support the resolution. I'm a member of the committee, and I was, you know, to get all the information. I wonder if we just need to include a, just a small friendly amendment in the resolution just with those few details of how many kilometers it is and what the actual price is, and if we just added that on to it so that the resolution actually is clear?
That's in the background.
No, it isn't.
It's on the background.
But it's still nowhere, nowhere does it total up to the $450,000.
You just times it by five.
Well, I know that. I know.
And times, and it is five years, correct, Mr. Adams?
Correct. Right, so we don't.
And it doesn't say five years.
I know.
Yeah, okay.
Did, did you call the question, Counsel Duffy?
Yes.
Oh, hold on. Deputy, go right ahead.
I mean, just quickly, everyone's said their piece, and I agree with Counsel Twill there, just the last comment. I mean, the, the second bid here, they have been in business for quite some time, serving the city and the province in various aspects. And I know we say price is only a certain component, but it's a $450,000 component over the life of this, over the life of this contract. And as we've done in the past, if the contract is fulfilled and they've done a good job, it gets extended, so we could be looking at 10 years. So then we're looking at, you know, 900 or a million dollars here in, in the difference between the two prices. And to go back to Counsel Bernard's point, he is right. We had a contractor that wasn't able to move the snow, but I think between the two that we're talking about here, I think we can both agree that they're both adequately supplied and equipped to, to move snow. And I think if you look at the, the price for the, for the taxpayers, it is quite significant.
Okay, questions called? Okay. Now, questions called? All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. Those against? So Counsel Twill, Duron, McCabe, and Deputy Mayor Cody against. It carries 5-4.
What was it?
5-4. 4 against. Just one second. Counselors.
As fast as I can.
Okay, that's all the report there. Okay. Next report, Counsel McCabe.
Yep, thank you, your worship. The Economic Development Tourism and Event Management Committee met on September 21st. The minutes are in your package. The Arts Advisory Board did not meet. We don't have any resolutions. I know everyone's tired, but I am going to share a few updates. Staff are currently in communication with the PEI Department of Health and Wellness, Recruitment and Retention Secretariat with respect to identifying a date that best works for medical professional welcome reception and appreciation. Likewise, they're also in communication with Immigrant Refugee Services PEI with respect to identifying the best format and time of year for the newcomers' orientation. The department has been approached by the Holland College Business Analytics Center to determine if there was opportunity for their students to work directly with the city on future projects, so that can be exciting, nice to plug in, they'll learn, cheap, cheap, cheap help. Planning is currently underway for the Holiday Civic Events as partner events. This year, Charlestown Christmas Festival will run from the 18th of November to the 2nd of January. It will include signature city events such as the annual tree lighting, which will be on November 25th. The Charlestown Christmas Parade is scheduled for the 26th. Looks like it's returning to normal, so they won't be doing the community ones, but back to regular. And our Capitol New Year's celebrations will be on the 31st. It's been busy on the event front with Charlestown hosting the U-15 Cup Boys and Girls Toyota National Soccer Championships over this past weekend, brought over 1,300 people to our city. The highly successful event, our PEI FC U-15 Girls get the silver medal, which was a huge accomplishment. So I think Rachel Green, who's actually our Tourism and Culture Events sister, was part of that coaching staff, Yanis Barna, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the rest, but they all had an integral part of that. And finally, our city is going to play host to the Canada Games National Sponsor Summit this week. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
Any questions? Counsel McCabe, I just want to make reference to the Downtown Perkin Initiative. It's in your package. The scan was completed throughout the Atlantic region, correct, Wayne?
We're in the, in the process of meeting with Discover Charlestown to discuss a proposed initiative.
And Downtown Charlestown, Inc.?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, no questions? Okay.
So, under new business, well, environment sustainability, that one first. Okay, new business, Counsel Duron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, the email we got on October 5th, it just kind of, you know, I'm just kind of wondering why are we changing the way things go at this point in the structure? Maybe if this could be implemented in the new council, it might make sense. I just don't know what, you know, why we're doing this now. Can you clarify the reasons why?
I'm going to ask Donna, but I know I was at the finance meeting and we were, Counsel Duffy, I know Counsel Duffy wanted to take the vote along with myself, but we did end up forwarding it back to Public Works. Donna, do you want to give a little background and share some of your?
Maybe the deputy mayor does?
Oh, the deputy mayor can, yes.
I can, and if anyone on the committee, if this doesn't come out right, step up. But we were asked as a committee, why does everything kind of come through finance? Like, when we approve an operation and capital budget, that if it's not new money, or if you're not exceeding the money that was given to you for your, your certain budget for allocations, then there's no reason for it to come back to finance, the committee felt. I think we were trying to avoid a situation that we get into earlier where a certain committee is recommending a project, and then it comes to finance, and finance looks, and then we have a vote, and we're saying no, then it makes finances kind of rule in the roost, which is not, which is not the case at all. So if it wasn't new money, or if it wasn't over the money that was allocated to each department, then we didn't feel like it should come to finance, but that's just a committee decision. We're up for, if that wants to change back, that's okay, but we, we were just reflecting back on some previous experiences. That's, that's really where it kind of came from.
Counsel Duron, supplementary comment or a question on that?
Yes, well, thank you. That explains the reasons why. Like, you know, we, we gave something from our committee, you know, we all had a vote, we won 2-1. It goes to your committee, and one of our members says, okay, I'll deal with the finance, and it goes to your committee, then it's overturned. And then it comes back, and we're saying, well, we recommended it, now we're end up paying a legal bill over it.